Good evening, we'll call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call, roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Here.
Councilmember Denver.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Here.
And Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And for words of inspiration this evening, we have Father Frederick Castalas of St. Vincent Farrar Church.
Let us pray in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty and ever living God, we give you honor and thanks for the wonders of this day and for your sustaining love. We ask you to oversee this meeting. Send forth your speed upon these leaders, our mayor and his council. We ask you to bestow upon them your blessing to love, to walk, and to journey with your people. Let them feel their pains and share their joys. Holy Lord, let us pray for the many who are struggling with change, for those who struggle for change and those who struggle against it, all seeking to serve you, all trying to be your people, yet through different ideas, different interpretations, and different understandings, all seeing only to plainly their own points of view while missing everybody's else's. Bless all of these good people. Grant them the wisdom and insight remembered above all the commandment of love. O wondrous God, our imagination cannot conceive you; our brains cannot explain you; only our heart can truly know you. Forgive us when we think with our heads instead of feeling with our hearts; forgive us when we claim sovereignty over you; forgive us when we pretend secret inside into your will. So finally, Lord, let us pray for the unity of your people, not for the unity of belief, because while we share a common vision, yet purposely created us as individuals with different understandings, experiences, and beliefs. Instead, we pray for unity of faith that despite our differences, through love and tolerance, we may all be one with you. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. Father and Son.
Thank you, Father. Deputy Mayor, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, if you put your right hand over your heart, follow me in the salute to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we have a presentation to make this evening. If you would join me up front. With us this evening is Dr. Hessler from the Riverside County Mental Health Department. Doctor, would you please join us up front? In recognition of the upcoming May of Mental Health Month and Awareness Month in the city of Menifee, we have this proclamation to present to you and your colleagues at the county. Whereas mental illness can impact anyone regardless of age, background, employment, education, and income level, and mental illness usually strikes individuals in the prime of their lives, often during adolescence and young adulthood, although the very young and the elderly are especially vulnerable. And many treatments for serious mental illnesses in combination with treatment and recovery supports are highly effective, allowing people to maintain their quality of life and their involvement with their families and communities. And recent population data suggests that nearly 140,000 people of all ages in Riverside County may be impacted by serious mental illness and may seek treatment from a variety of community resources. And the Mental Health America has promoted the observance of "May is Mental Health Month" since 1949 in order to increase awareness and understanding of mental health. And encouraging awareness of mental health issues and promoting wellness and recovery for those with mental health needs are important values for every community. Now therefore, the city of Menifee proclaims "May is Mental Health Month" in the city of Menifee and asks citizens to recognize May 22, 2014, as Mental Health Awareness Day. Sir, we present this proclamation on behalf of the entire city council.
Thank you for this. This proclamation, and those from other cities in Riverside County, will be on display at the mayor's Mental Health Month activity at Fairmont Park in Riverside on Thursday, May 22. It's from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., and everyone's invited, everyone's encouraged to come. There is such a thing as a free lunch, whatever they say. To the contrary, lunch is served, there's activities for children, and more importantly, there are booths set up with an array of different programs available to people within Riverside County for help with substance abuse and with mental illness. So it's May 22, Thursday, from 1:00 to 6:00. I also wanted to say, I am a member of both the Riverside County Mental Health Board and the Regional Board, which for this region is mid-county. I retired a few years ago. I happen to be a psychiatrist, and I wanted to keep in touch with mental health issues and programs. And when I applied to be a board member, I assumed that the board member would be stocked with psychiatrists, psychologists, social workers, people in the field. Absolutely not true. I'm the only one. It's really, there are three categories of membership. Consumers, meaning patients, people who are using or have used the services; family members of same; or public interest members, which means any citizen of the county, or the county board, or of this area, or the mid-county board. And we need members, there's always turnover. We're kind of short at the present time in the mid-county region. And I took the liberty of bringing the schedules for the mid-county board. It meets first Wednesdays from 3:00 to 5:00. It's an awkward time for a lot of working folks or students, and I guess that's when kids come home from school. So it's not an ideally convenient time for a lot of people. But if you can do it, I really suggest people just simply attend and see what we do. Don't be intimidated by it. It's important. Actually, we oversee the operations of the department of mental health and have real input into the programs. So I will leave these with the county, the city clerk, in case people are interested in coming. It said the next one is May 1 in Paris.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Linda, there's another committee you could sit on.
Onto our next presentation for this evening, Senior Advisory Committee Report on Survey Findings. Mr. Johnson, do you have any comments on this before we begin?
Actually, I'm going to turn that over to Robert Lennox, your Community Services Director, and he's going to do an introduction.
Thank you.
Thank you, city manager, and thank you, Mayor Mann. It's my pleasure to introduce Gloria Sanchez, who's been integral in the collection of information, along with the rest of the ad hoc committee for the senior advisory responsibilities in 2013 and concluding that in 2014. I'm not going to get into the details. I believe Gloria is going to do that on behalf of the committee. So without further ado, Gloria, please.
Good evening, Mayor Mann, Councilmen, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure and honor to be here tonight to represent the senior citizens of this great city of Menifee. At this time, I'd like to go over the results of a survey that was conducted by the Ad Hoc Committee for Menifee Senior Citizens. The Ad Hoc Committee of Menifee Senior Citizens was formed in 2013. Oh, they tell me I have to do this. And for the purposes of conducting a needs assessment survey, identifying senior needs, and informing seniors about community services. The needs assessment survey was completed in the fall of 2013. The needs assessment survey results indicate that what we needed to do to get the, and you have a copy of the survey that was given out to our senior citizens. Members of the committee went out to HOA meetings, 55-plus communities, to distribute the surveys. And surveys were also available on the city's website, at Menifee City Hall, the Case and Nacero Senior Center, the Community Access Center, and Menifee Sun City Concern. And we thank all of them who participated in this. Although we have a large group of seniors, we only received a total of 352 surveys, but that was our first time out, so that was good. Representing approximately 1.55 percent of the total Menifee seniors, population including all 55-plus residents, the Ad Hoc Committee was able to get a sense of what the major senior citizen concerns and issues are in Menifee. The survey results will identify and summarize the main concerns and issues. If you look at the two graphs there that we have, it does show the population which reside in specific Menifee communities, and you can see that our largest population is in Sun City. You can also, right next to it, see how long they resided in the communities. The main overwhelmingly transportation was identified as the most important issue concerned by survey respondents. Accessibility to and from the doctor's offices, retail, and amenities were identified is very important. While a majority of survey respondents indicated they drive, augmenting existing transportation options was a need identified throughout the various survey questions. Social and recreational opportunities. Survey results indicated interest in expanding existing social and recreational opportunities for seniors. Over 55 percent of respondents indicated they currently volunteer, with volunteering ranging from HOAs to hospitals to the library, and another 22 percent indicating they plan to volunteer in the future. This tells us that the senior population is indeed engaged in their community. Respondents indicated interest in participating in additional cultural and recreational social Communication. The primary forms of communication for survey respondents was identified in order: word-of-mouth, Menifee e-news, newspaper, the senior center, and the city of Menifee website. Many senior residents still rely on traditional mediums of communication, newspaper and word-of-mouth, while others are also using newer forms of communication like Menifee e-news and the Menifee website. Survey results indicated potential methods to improve information distribution and access to services to senior residents by utilizing senior-specific web page, increasing computer literacy, and direct email to seniors. The most popular response when asked what senior resident most need assistance with was computer use and/or internet access, further signaling the interest in using new communication methods. Favorite things about Menifee. The top three things identified by survey respondents was what they liked most about Menifee were quiet ambience, location proximity to amenities and/or family, and the small-town feel. Other related responses such as small-town feel, friendly people, overall community, and senior community indicate that geographical composition and weather are important factors. It is the personal relationship and people that make the senior community enjoy living in Menifee. The committee recommendations. The number one, again, transportation. We need to research what existing programs, if any, that can help address transportation concerns. Options to consider: trolley services with centrally located stop points, partnerships with other agencies such as county and RTA and others. Communication. Work on expanding current Menifee area coverage within the local newspaper. Organize town hall meetings specifically focused on senior issue concerns. Work on expanding community involvement participation. Senior information webpage. Set up a webpage section of the city website specifically dedicated to senior information and resources. Lastly, the directory resource guide. Create a guide that aligns with senior information issues concerned in conjunction with website section of city website. Coordinate a good distribution of directory resource guide to make sure as many people as possible receive a copy. Not only would this copy help the seniors, but it will help their family, their children, their grandchildren. The general concerns of the committee that came out in the survey: Sun City shopping centers needs revitalization and better inspections. The core is changing, with younger residents need to be aware of what this means to the community. Safety, crime concerns throughout the community. As new development comes in and the community continues to grow, the impacts of law enforcement's needs should be reviewed, accounted for. Future actions. Survey results will be incorporated into the parks, trails, open space, and recreation master park plan process. Creation of a senior advisory committee. On July 1, 2014, the city will assume operation of the Case and Nacero Senior Center. At this time, gentlemen, I would like to ask those members of this committee who work so very hard to please stand up and be acknowledged.
Stand up.
That concludes my presentation. I will answer any questions or hear comments.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez, for a very thorough report, and thank you for chairing the working group for this ad hoc committee. We couldn't think of anybody more appropriate, given your experience with the county as the executive director of the advisory council. I think it would have been foolish for us to not leverage that experience in this particular effort. And I think that your recommendations, the committee's recommendations, are going to be taken on board, and I'd like to punt it to Councilmember August for any comments that he may have.
Well, first of all, thank you, Ms. Sanchez, for bringing this information forward to the city. I know we look forward to taking those into consideration, working with a future senior committee that probably will be nominated in the next few months. But anyway, I want to thank you and all the volunteers who are in the audience tonight. I did attend several meetings and was very impressed with all the committee members and the level of interest and the enthusiasm, care, and true concern each had in supporting the committee formed by your direction, Mr. Mayor, to determine and address and promote the issues and needs of the senior community throughout the city. And I want a special thanks to Alanyan and Margarita Cuniego and other staff members for providing the administrative and logistical support to the committee, and also to Rob Johnson for offering and providing the high and sincere quality of support reflected in Allen and Margarita's work, and as well as the other staff members in the city. Mayor, I want to thank you for appointing me to this committee. It was a pleasure and an honor, but the truth is, Ms. Sanchez provided the necessary leadership to form, organize, and accomplish the goals of the committee. I was, for the most part, along for the coffee and donuts. Mr. Edgerton, transportation being the number one need, and we're going to ask you to step forward in the next few months and find us a trolley service and communication for the seniors in District 1 throughout the city.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm sure something can be arranged about a trolley. I just want to thank the committee, as did the mayor and the rest of the council, and particularly Gloria Sanchez. I was talking to Jeff Stone the other day, and we were laughing because he was running for supervisor at the time I was running for mayor. And we decided we would walk the oasis inside of it. And of course, there are rules and regulations about that, but we figured we were fairly important, and Gloria Sanchez kicked both of us out. She is a woman of integrity. She doesn't do anybody any special favors, and that's why we have come to admire her so greatly over the years. We know we can trust her, and thank you, Gloria, so very much for what you do. And I'll guarantee you, we'll be working on that trolley. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any other questions of the council? With that being said, thank you once again. Thank you, all the committee members. You did a marvelous job, and like Councilmember August said, we were just along, really, for the ride. You did all the work, and staff did all the number crunching. And I think we got some really good data. Even though the survey size was not what, when we set this out, we didn't expect such, I mean, 352 is a great response, but we were looking for around 600, I think, is what our goal was. But that's okay. I think we can take it from there. And some of the recommendations and future actions have already been set in motion at the last council meeting. The council gave direction to staff to go ahead and create the senior advisory committee, as well as the youth advisory committee associated with community services presentation. And so with all that being said, as a result of this action and you delivering this report tonight, I hereby disestablish the ad hoc committee to pave the way for the new senior advisory committee. Well done. Thank you, and another round of applause for this committee. Thank you. Onto Agenda Item 5.3, another presentation. Mr. Johnson, business license and registration in the rural community.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Last council meeting, I gave an update on our business license program, some of the things that we were thinking of adjusting, and basically wanted to make sure that we're staying on the same path with you as we move forward, and give an update as well to those that are in the community that are here. Last week, I met with Roxanne Thompson, who is kind of the coordinator and the information disseminator spokesperson for some businesses in the rural area. We're going to meet again tomorrow. The plan is that we're going to talk and draft and coordinate a staff workshop, which means that we'll have our city staff available to businesses to come in and chat with us about their issues in the rural community between the current business license program and provisional business license program that we currently have, so that we can get their feedback. And then we'll take that feedback and we'll work with that group to bring a workshop to city council. And what our plan is, staff's plan, my plan, was to do a combined workshop of staff reviewing the current ordinance we have, some issues that the rural business community has with that ordinance, and a way to move forward. And get feedback then from council for a policy direction. Once we get the feedback from council, we'll then draft an ordinance that would go first to the planning commission and then to council. So just wanted to give you an update that we're continuing. Even though you don't see things waving around out there, these new programs that we have or a new ordinance that we have, we're methodically going through, we're listening to the rural community and the businesses that are out there, and going to get their feedback before we move forward. On a last note, I did mention that some of those business licenses were returned to some folks, and that was after we sent a couple letters and followed up with a couple phone calls and mentioned to you that we'd be sending another letter out to those folks, which we've done, and I believe it's working. Terry Willoughby's name and contact information is on there. She's spoken to about eight, no more than eight, no less than 10 of those folks that we sent letters to, and we're working individually to make sure that they are getting what they need and that the service that they provide to the community that we can then license is what it is, and we can move forward and reestablish that business license. So things are working. We're communicating as well and as best we can. Probably not as fast as everybody else would want it to go, but we want to make sure we hear from everybody before we move on. So those are the updates that I have. The last two items, before I move any further, I want to introduce Gina Gonzalez, our senior management analyst in the city manager's office, started this week. And Lori's hiding, but Lori Maitly is our new county clerk in finance. She's, Lori comes to us from Temecula, and Gina comes to us from Supervisor Stone's office, and prior to that, she was with Senator Emerson. So we're glad to have them both on staff.
Mr. August?
I just want to make a comment to the staff. I want to thank Rob and the efforts that he and the staff are putting forward in trying to work any problems that we might have with the rural community. We, it's funny that we've all, we all are aware of what's going on in Clark County in Nevada now, and every time I see that on the news, I go, whoa, is that going to be coming to Menifee soon? I do believe that we can probably resolve something, but the best way to do that is to sit down with them, communicate back and forth. And my only hope with the staff is that we will continue. Each time we make a step forward on the council, that we in turn go back and maybe run it and check it by the rural community, so we don't find ourselves at the end of the process in a big lockjaw disagreement again. But I totally believe in the approach that the staff is taking to find a resolution to this problem. So I want to thank you, Rob, for that.
I echo those thoughts, Mr. Johnson. I know that you and the staff are working, and I know the council members up here have taken a lot of input, but one of the most important things is that the communication is starting to flow, whereas I don't believe it was as much as it could have been, and I think that has led to some misconceptions, some misperceptions, and some things that just ain't true. And so as we work to bust down those barriers, I think this thing will be solved to the satisfaction of most, and I thank you for your efforts. Onto the next agenda item, approval of the minutes of April 2, 2014. Are there any modifications to those minutes? Hearing none, those are approved. Are there any modifications? Is there any modification to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, sir. As posted.
The agenda is approved. Onto public comments. We'll take the first public commenter, please.
Yes, sir. And Pika?
Good evening. After listening to the recording of the last planning commission meeting, I must agree with Chris Thomas. I too hear the Gestapo marching into Menifee. This city council has allowed staff to impose all kinds of ordinances that impede on the lifestyles of the citizens of Menifee, placing unrealistic permit requirements and refusing to work with the citizens who have had businesses in Menifee long before it became a city and now are being forced to pay thousands of dollars if they want to keep their business. It's just disgraceful. On the recording, Chris Thomas said that he had talked to Councilman August about the containers, and Mr. August told him that he was coerced into voting against the containers. Now, if what Chris Thomas said is true, then I would say to Mr. August that if you were coerced into voting a certain way by another public official, then it is your duty as a duly elected official to report that to the district attorney. I'm sure you won't, but I'm telling you, you're just as guilty as the person who swayed your vote. While I'm on the subject of Mr. August, if you spent less time down at city hall controlling the employees and more time in your district, talking to your constituents, you might find out that there are many problems that need your assistance as a representative of District 1. If you plan on finishing out your term in office, I would advise you to start paying attention to what's happening in your district. First step might be leave the concerns and control of the city staff at city hall to the city manager, and put all that effort into having town hall meetings with your constituents in District 1. None of the city staff are from District 1, and less than half even live in the city of Menifee. I would advise you to start doing the job you're elected to do in District 1 if you don't want your image tarnished. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Dean Wetter.
Honorable Mayor, honorable Deputy Mayor and council, as well as residents, my name's Dean Wetter with Valleywide Recreation and Park District. The purpose of this item is to share with you some upcoming events. I want to first take the opportunity to talk about our Easter egg hunt, which will happen at the Marion Ashley Community Center, located on Briggs Road, just north of Highway 74. If you know where Heritage High School is, it's just up the road. That'll be on April 19th. It is free. It is designed for ages 12 and under, and it's just a great time. So invite you to that. Also, on April 22nd, we are doing a groundbreaking at our Diamond Valley Lake Community Park, which is just down Newport Road, where it turns into Dominogony to Searl Parkway. And there we are opening a new two-story concession restroom facility to serve the needs there. It's a beautiful facility, and we're excited to do a ribbon cutting. That is at 3:30 in the afternoon on April 22nd. Thursday on April 24th, at 6 o'clock in the afternoon, at Wheatfield Park Community Center, we are going to hold a community meeting in regards to dog park improvements, and invite you to that as well for Alder Gate Park. And then finally, on May 17th, we are holding a mud run. We call it the Jurassic Classic, and that is at our Diamond Valley Facility. And there is information on the website at runforthemud.com. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wetter. Next speaker, please.
Peter Thorworth. Peter Thorworth?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here first to speak about a success we had this past Friday. It was Menifee's Got Talent, which in this case was held, not at the case in the Searl Center, but was held at Heritage High School. And we had an extraordinary turnout, both in terms of very talented performers, singers, dancers, musicians. We had twenty-three acts. One of those acts, for example, was the Heritage High School dancers, which was twenty performers just in that one act. We had many talented people from the age of eight to seventy-eight, and we appreciate everyone's support and hope to do that again. It's a good reminder that Menifee residents are prepared and very interested in turning out to support live talent, and it's my understanding that the plan for the town center property does include a inexpensive amphitheater somewhere within those plans, because with this much talent and this much interest in attending live performances, it really is, in my view, improper that a city of this size doesn't have a venue for public performances. Shifting gears, I wanted to bring to your attention that there is a creative writing contest that is going to be held also under the auspices of Arts Council Menifee, and that'll be for ages eighth, grade six through eight. So the middle schools will be putting on a creative writing contest with the theme, what would you do to make the world a better place? Of course, in my opinion, to make it a better place, a nice performance venue would be high on the list. I'd like to mention, with regard to that creative writing contest, that if the city or any members of the community would like to contribute towards the prizes, because we're gonna have a grand prize, we're gonna have one winner per middle school, and we will have individuals cited as well for their good writing, anyone that might want to contribute in terms of prizes can contact Shirley Wyble at the library, would probably be the best way to go. And then finally, taking off my Arts Council hat, if the council could speak tonight in some fashion, I'd like to know why Shaun Nelson, who I know is a very good person, and is being paid $60,000 or more to be an executive advisor to the council, is never at council meetings. So if he could speak to that, I'd like to know.
That's because Mr. Nelson's contract expired on February 28th, incident to his retirement from the city of Temecula, and under the new CalPERS rules, he cannot be employed by any public agency that has CalPERS for six months. So that's why he's not here, and he has not been here. Thank you, Mayor. Next speaker, please.
Cindy Gentau.
Good evening, Mayor Mann and council. My name is Cindy. I'm, I just wanted to bring up an incident that occurred on March 17th. On that day, in the morning, I parked my car in the shopping center on Cherry Hills and Bradley to commute to work, and that I had been dining along with my friend Violet, that we had been doing for, well, me for three years and
Four years.
Her four years. And then upon return to our cars that evening, we found out our cars were towed. I guess apparently the shopping center owner didn't want us parking there anymore. So, yeah, over the weekend, apparently he put up like signs saying tow for customer parking only, and we didn't realize that, because we, you know, get there early in the morning and stark, and we didn't really pay any attention. But what I would like to know from council and the mayor is, you know, we're customers in this shopping center. I mean, we do our business, you know, afterward, we do a lot of our business in that area, even in that shopping center, and the sign said, you know, it's for customer parking only. But I'd like to know, is the city planning on, is there any place where commuters like us going to work, is there a place that we can park where we are feared that our car's gonna be towed without parking on the street, fearing vandalism or get, you know, our car is getting hit? If you would consider maybe having any future shopping centers, maybe, you know, setting aside like spaces for commuters? You know, do you guys have any like park and ride lots in the city that you, you know, because I don't know of any, that you would consider, or even maybe a transit center?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, can you address that idea briefly?
Yes, sir, thank you. There is a rideshare lot at Revival Church. I do know that. That's the only one around, I think, off Scott Road in Menifee.
Yeah, but the thing is, we catch the bus.
I understand. You asked if there was a rideshare lot. There's one, it might not be very helpful, but, and two, we have contacted the library to see if there's an opportunity there to do a rideshare. However, that parking lot's not very large either. Unfortunately, that is a private parking lot. It's not city's property. Unfortunately, we can chat with the owner, but that's about as much as we can do.
That's it.
What about future shopping centers?
We'll take that under advisement. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. That's the third time I've heard it, and I really appreciate you coming and speaking to us tonight about it. We'll see what we can do as we do our future plans.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Louis Maisie.
Good evening, Mayor Mann and city council members. A month ago, I appeared before the city council to express my concerns about commuter issues and associated air quality concerns. Since that meeting, I found that the parking lot where the commuter cars were towed, there are now signs announcing tollway zone. Is the entire parking lot a tollway zone? I told my wife not to park in the tollway parking lot and not shop at the businesses and professional services located in those specific buildings owned by the owner, lest she can find a space in an adjacent parking lot. Until these signs went up, we were frequent customers. Additionally, those commuters that had their cars towed informed me that they all find other stores and professional services in nearby communities to shop and obtain services. Incidentally, library patrons of the adjacent Sun City Library could have their cars towed when they have to park their cars in the tollway parking lot because the library parking lot is filled. As stated earlier, my household will simply avoid problems and not wait for interpretation who is a customer and who isn't. We will not park in the tollway zone parking lot until the owner decides to take these signs down. The city of Temecula has adopted a trip reduction ordinance. In addition, the city has gotten the Promenade Shopping Center to designate a floor in one of their parking garages for commuters to park their cars. The city of Paris has a transit center used for buses, future metro link trains, and parking for commuters. I understand that another transit center is being planned north of Ethan Act Road in the city of Paris. Will the city of Menifee ever take measures to have owners owning lots within shopping centers to set aside parking spaces for commuters? Will the city of Menifee ever pursue building transit centers and ride and park lots? I, as a resident, have expressed public transit concerns and air quality concerns at different venues. As Mayor Mann stated at a community meeting, the average age of the city of Menifee residents in five and a half years has dropped from forty-eight years to thirty-five. The needs of the younger working age groups, such as commuter issues, have to be addressed now and into the future. This concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maisie, Deputy Mayor?
Louis, as you know, having worked for the county, and this doesn't directly address what you're concerned about, but regarding transit centers, as you know, it's the goal and the hope that that metro link will be continuing down through Hemet, through Menifee, and down to Temecula, so it forms a complete system. And we're prepared to do that tomorrow. We're just short of one thing, money. But the plans are there, and we are moving forward on that. That's a good point you made, though.
Thank you. And could I call upon Mr. Smith? I believe you had, you have something in the works in the future regarding these matters that will be coming back to the council at some future date.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Department is taking every opportunity to look at areas along the I-215 corridor that may provide a resource for providing a parking ride. So continue that and bring that information to council.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Linda Denver. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen. I too am representing Arts Council Menifee and want to tell you about some activities coming up in the month of May. Our art gallery at Kasona Searl Center will have another art gallery reception on May 4th, that's a Sunday, and we're moving it to four o'clock to six o'clock to allow us to use the facility on that date. So that's May 4th, four o'clock to six o'clock. We have a brand-new set of artists whose work are now being displayed. Next, you've probably noticed the flyer that has been showing on the screens. The Fourth Annual Arts Showcase will be held at the Countryside Marketplace on May 17th, that's a Saturday, from 11:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon, and will be featuring artists of the community displaying their work, as well as music, performers, dance, vocalists at three different staging areas between Deer Hunter and Chipotle. This is open to the public. We hope that the community will come out and see the explosion of talent that's really coming out through the assistance of you and the Arts Council Menifee. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Robert Jacobson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Mann and Deputy Mayor Egerton and City Council. Thank you for letting me speak to you. I have a safety issue. I live at 33625 Sweetwater Canyon Road, off of Scott and Sweetwater, and my house has been struck several times by bullets, and then my vehicle, I had a bullet go through my windshield parked next to my house, and I had also my utility trailer struck by a bullet. So there's people shooting, they've been shooting there for twenty-five, thirty years over the hill from my house, and you access it through, oh, I can't think of the street. It's the light between Scott and Marietta, no, not Marietta, Clinton Keith. There's a light there north of the hospital, that street, you go west.
Keller.
Keller, yes, thank you. You go back there, and then you turn left at that big giant water tank, and there's a big expanse of land back there, and people go back there horseback riding, shooting, and dirt bike riding, and such like that. So I've called the police, the sheriff's department, I don't know how many times, I can't even think, and they go back there and they shoe them off, and they tell them to leave. And one police officer returned my call and said, you should go to city council, because there's no signs of any kind of no shooting, no shooting within city limits, and address it with the city council and yourself of there should be some signs posted. So I'd like to know who I could talk to about that and address that issue, because I literally, it's, you know, I've had my house, a bullet go through my bathroom window, and it's just at a point now where it's creepy going outside when I hear shooting, you know?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this to our attention. You came to the right place. Deputy Mayor, this is your old neighborhood.
Yes, it is. And I'm trying, where on Sweetwater do you live?
I live
Maybe you don't want to give your address, you're afraid you're gonna get shot.
Well, he already said it. 33625 Sweetwater.
Yeah, but where is that?
I live like three properties south of where you used to live.
Okay.
On the same side of the road.
Okay, okay. There was, your testimony is kind of shocking to me, because there, I don't know why the police aren't responding. They used to respond.
They do.
Well, they would respond and arrest those people, and some of them go to jail. That is unlawful to shoot in that area. Those bullets can go for a mile easily, and so I'm not sure why they're not arresting them. One of our neighbors got arrested, went to jail, and ended up on two years probation for doing that.
I always thought it was a rule of no shooting within city limits, period.
Well, my request then would be to the city manager to talk to Captain Judge, see what's going on, because we already have a law on the books, and, you know, I've got about six guns. I love guns. I love to shoot, but don't generally shoot where you can hit people.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're ricochets or errant bullets coming right over the hill to my property, and I have no idea what the other, the neighbors are dealing with, you know?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I think Mr. Johnson has a comment on this, but it also may be an issue of our neighbors to the south, because south of Keller Road is the city of Marietta, so we may have some coordination to do with our neighbor to the south. Mr. Johnson, can you elaborate?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Jacobson, Lieutenant Gien is waiting for you in the lobby, and he's gonna take a statement from you and help you out tonight.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Jan Tucker.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am speaking as an individual for my friends from Sun City. Thank you for the lovely monument, excuse me, the monument that was put up designating Sun City as a community of Menifee. I voted for cityhood, I'm all for it, but I secretly was afraid we would become known as Old Town Menifee. Well, now I conceive that that's gonna change. I've lived here since 1987. I'm an old-time Sun Cityer. And when I saw that
Can you get closer to the mic? And you pull it down. There you go. Thank you.
When I saw that monument, I did my happy dance.
Wait till you see the freeway sign going up.
No, really?
Yeah, yeah, it's coming.
Because I just felt like Sun City still lives. And also, I speak for myself, and I thank you for the California Live Oak Tree that's been planted. I was raised I was raised from first grade to graduation from high school, and my first job in Oakdale, California, which was known for its live oak trees. Our main caf, restaurant was known, known as the Live Oak Cafe. So when I saw that, in Menifee Matters, we were getting our own California Live Oak Tree, I felt like I had really come home to Sun City and Menifee. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Councilmember Furman?
I'd like to kind of assure you that actually Old Town Menifee is up in hills over in my neighborhood that was laid out ten years before Sun City was, so Old Town Menifee is over that way. Okay.
Councilmember Denver?
That's wonderful that you would say such positive things to us, really appreciate it. However, that tree was planted and is being taken care of at thousands of dollars cost by one of those evil developers that so many of us don't like.
That tree was rescued from a property in Mal, not Malibu, the San, Montecito, up there near Santa Barbara. And so that was rescued and brought here and replanted, so. Next speaker, please.
Katie Meneer. Last year, there was a sledge forum held in this city. The whole concept was presented by City Manager Rob Johnson, orchestrated by our City Attorney, Ms. Biggs, and hosted by Scott Mann. At this meeting, it was stated to the public that no records of any sledge being dumped in Menifee were available due to the fact that the county had destroyed all records. And yet, at the same meeting, City Attorney Biggs went on the record saying that all records, and especially environmental records, according to Kathy Bennett as well, were preserved on disk. There are records that show where, when, and how much sledge was dumped, and our city wanted possession of those records so they could also be destroyed. That's not happening. I also want to thank Mr. August for naming the person that made a threat against me. Now, in response to your comment, when I was so rudely stopped from addressing you again by Mayor Mann, when I spoke to you by phone, you said you didn't feel it was a threat, but rather he was going to respond to those who were speaking out about him. I'd like to ask you what you think a person means when they say, or they, when they say they're going to take care of someone. Seems to me that simply saying he was going to address the people speaking out about him would have been a proper statement, but saying he was going to take care of these people seems much more like a threat. Unfortunately, our police chief didn't think it was a threat either. I believe he probably called Mr. Mann and got his side of the story and told me there was nothing to worry about. When I speak at these meetings, I have facts to back up my statements, and maybe that's what makes Mr. Mann so angry. I will continue to speak out and address issues that are of concern, such as the backdoor deal still being made and the exorbitant fees being paid to the city attorney. Every citizen should be concerned, concerned about these issues. Maybe I can borrow Ms. Sobek's rose-colored glasses, and things will look as rosy to me as they do to her.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Christopher Saunders.
My name is Christopher Saunders, and I come to you guys for some help, as well as everybody else is here tonight. I am a small business owner, a veteran from the Marine Corps, from both of the current wars and past war that was going on. And I am trying to bring something fun to the city and hopefully help out the community as well. Some of these issues that I've been hearing tonight, I believe having the type of business that I would, would bring in some more money, not only for the city, but also directly impact some of the, some of the issues that we're having in this city. I am a Menifee resident, I've been here two years now, and I've lived in the area about four years. I lived in Marietta for two years. I absolutely love this city, I love the, the feel of it and everything, and part of what I'm trying to do is to give back, okay? The problem I, I'm having right now is, as a few people stated, some of the fees that are involved in trying to open up a business. First of all, the business that I'd like to open is a paintball airsoft park, and that's obviously targeted more towards the youth and things like that, as the youth is growing in numbers in this city, and there is nothing for them to do. It is far enough away from the senior citizen community who, in my personal opinion, we all have, the younger generation has something to learn from the senior citizen community for sure. I've learned a lot. Anyways, the problem that I'm having is about January 21st, I believe it was, I submitted a minor site plan for a site that's right off of Han Road, and from what I understand, has yet to be deemed as the economic development corridor. Now, like most Menifee residents, I don't like seeing these big box companies come in, and I'd love to preserve some of this land. My company, my business, would be doing just that. We use all biodegradable things, everything is temporary. So the problem again is that when I submitted this site plan, I was told that the minor site plan is good to go. And I gave the $2,500 for the fee initially. I was told about a week later that it was going to be $7,500 more dollars because it fell under a minor site plan conditional use permit. When I questioned that, I wasn't given a straight answer until I met with the engineer that was actually assigned to the project. And from what I understand, he said that it was about a two-minute conversation with Mr. Charles Leclerc, and Charles Leclerc was already aware of this whole thing, and he immediately said, "Yep, it has to be a major site plan conditional use permit." And I don't understand why still to this day. I understand what the precedence was that was set for a minor conditional use permit, but again, they, they didn't tell me other than like, "Oh, well, he said." So I'm trying to get some help with this. It's gonna, my projections show that for the city of Menifee alone, in the first year, it is going to raise the revenue, sales tax and everything, five percent. Five percent just from our business being there, and that's the first year.
Mr. Saunders, that's your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, could we get him an appointment with your economic development team and review things in terms of the business incentive ordinance that he may qualify for?
Absolutely. Jeff Wyman, who's probably here in the back, he may be listening to my voice, but you can meet with Gina and get your information to her, and she'll get right back to you.
Deputy Mayor?
Could I get a clarification? Did you say paintball? Is that where you?
That's correct. Paintball and airsoft, sir.
I thought paintball's where you shot.
It is, where you shoot paintballs, correct, yes. And airsoft uses biodegradable plastic pellets. Matter of fact...
You said, you said this is for juveniles, right?
No, no, for families and for the younger crowd, yes.
Well, I'm a senior, and I speak for the seniors. If you're going to have a park like that, we'd like to go too, but we feel our guns should be more high-powered.
Absolutely, sir. I couldn't agree with you more. No, absolutely. Everybody is more than welcome to come down, it's just a matter of getting it open.
All right. Thank you. See Ms. Gonzalez, she'll help you out, and we'll get you an audience. Next speaker, please.
Ms. Miller.
Oh.
Good evening, Council. Earth Day, April 22nd, Earth Week, April 21st through the 25th. To celebrate Earth Day in a sustainable manner, we must arrive in a sustainable manner. Check a bus schedule and find how you can transport yourself and family to your destination with the least gas-consuming footprint. How many of you ride RTA? This is shocking. Yes, I, I ride RTA. If you are going to Orange County, you can take an express bus from Elsinore Outlet Center and a metro link to Orange County and get around on a bus quite well. Or park in Orange County and get around on a bus to the fair and to the theme parks. Also, consume less meat products during Earth Week. Many beef products are produced in rainforests, and cattle farmers have slashed and burned the rainforest in South America to make your hamburger. Then there is the drought, of which we are all aware. We can decrease our water use by one water cycle for laundry and less time in the shower. Then there is taking out the grass and replacing it with drought-tolerant plants, or recycle water for plants. Then there is the harmful insecticide concern. I have seen workers in Menifee spraying cracks in the sidewalk with insecticides. What happened to weed choppers and handpicking? And weeds in cracks probably won't happen due to the drought. So I think that you can downsize those workers and put them on another project. If the product kills weeds, it also kills bees. Some apartment schools, shopping centers deliberately spray hedges that have been, that have lots of flowers on them. We have four years left if we kill all our bees. Those are our major pollinators. We won't have food. To decrease waste hauling and landfills, we need to bring our own cups, since disposable cups have BPA in the glue in the seams and rims, and styrene, styrene in the Styrofoam cups, and that's what you're drinking. Then there is electricity. I have noticed that the stores in Ralph's Shopping Center turn out their lights after ten. A good plan, let's get the other stores to do this. We can use clotheslines to dry our clothes. Does anyone have the metal clothes rack from Target? Oh, listen, you really get into that after a while. You look forward to hanging out your clothes. You get with nature, the wind, the sun, the whole thing. It works really well for therapy. About the community bus...
Ms. Miller, that's your time.
All right, the natural gas trolley, we don't use natural gas right anymore from the landfills, it comes from fracking. So think about what you're...
You know, Ms. Miller, you'd be happy to know that the city of Menifee plants drought-resistant plants in our medians and our landscaping. I think you'd be, appreciate that. Next speaker, please.
Casson Klein.
I wasn't going to speak tonight, but hearing some of the comments about the unfortunate situation that happened with the residents being towed, and some questions being asked about developers, commercial developers providing parking spaces. As you folks know, I represent a developer here in town of a large industrial project, as well as a large commercial project. And something that needs to be considered, and your planning director can speak to this, is your development code has provisions in it for a ratio of parking. Commercial, I believe, is one to 500, office is one to 250, industrials one per 5,000. Speaking to commercial, most large, big-box anchors are actually looking to developments to meet those requirements, and oftentimes provide more parking spaces than what codes require. So any path that you go down by mandating a private property owner, a commercial developer, to provide public parking, you may be defeating purposes and goals set forth in your economic development. It is a sensitive issue amongst developers because it is a private property matter. For instance, as an example, I would just say, you know, put the shoe on the other foot. As a resident, would you, would any of you who own homes, would you appreciate if somebody parked in your driveway while they walked across the street and shopped in a commercial plaza? So it's, it's definitely a delicate situation. I just wanted to provide, aside from a development, it should be noted that a project that you heard two weeks ago of mine, one of the things that we're required to do is to install RTA bus stops, and that's at a great expense, to provide that additional right-of-way and, and that design. Finally, as a solution, Mr. Smith mentioned reviewing up and down the 215 corridor opportunities for parking location. I'm a partner with, with my client. We own a 3.18 acre parcel immediately adjacent north of Keller and adjacent to the 215 freeway. We refer to it as a sliver piece that currently has nothing on it, and certainly would be happy to come in and meet with staff. Your previous city manager, your first city manager, George Wentz, was in discussions with Waste Management at one time about building a transfer center or a place where they could park their vehicles and then leave from there, not have trash there, but have empty vehicles there. So we're certainly amenable to sitting down with the city and maybe providing or working in concert with or somehow.
Yes.
So look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Next speaker, please.
Sir, that's all the speakers on public comments. Your next speaker is at the consent agenda level.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember, updates and comments? Gentlemen, do you have anything to report tonight? I have, I have a brief, you have Mr. something, Mr. Councilmember Furman?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. A, first of all, Councilman August touched on it a little bit, it's the, congratulations to the Bundy family over in Bunkersville. They successfully backed off the federal cow grab that they tried to grab his cows. They got his cows back. But what was amazing to me was the support they got from the neighbors and the people that drove to support him, and it looked like a, a showdown at the OK Corral with the feds on one side and the Bundy family on the other. So congratulation to them, but it was, it was all rectified with no bloodshed, and I think it's going to come to a happy conclusion. My second item is the, let's not forget the Quill Valley cleanup on the 26th. Gabian Park will take almost everything that you want to throw away. So get that, that pile of stuff in your garage, or pile up along the side of the house or next to the fence, throw it in a truck, and get it over there, they'll take everything. All right? Thank you.
Mr. Denver?
Maybe 10 seconds more on the Menifee's Got Talent. There was over 20 people up on the stage, some of the best entertainment that I've seen. It went on for two and a half hours. It was great standing ovations and screaming and yelling. It showed the cooperation between the city and the Arts Council and the school district. There were just no downside to that whole show. It was great.
Thank you. Just a couple of notes from my area. I attended the monthly Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting. Nothing significant on that agenda to report. I attended the annual We Tip Conference, which is a crime fighting and reporting company. I attended that with the District Attorney, Paul Zellerbach. I also sat through the strategic planning process for the county's Workforce Investment Board today, which I sit on the Board of Directors for. Mr. Maisy came and spoke about that trip reduction ordinance, and he mentioned that to me last Wednesday when I gave a community update to the Menifee and Paris Valley Democratic Club. So that's why Mr. Maisy came and addressed us tonight on that. And lastly, Deputy Mayor and I held our, the Finance Committee meeting two weeks ago. As a result of that particular meeting, you have two agenda items on thing for tonight, on the agenda for tonight, as well as two future items that are going to be coming before the council at a future date, which is a potential, for your consideration, a potential special reserve fund for saving for a potential animal shelter in the city of Menifee someday, as well as a revision to our municipal code to make a, a small change to our purchasing section for professional services contracts. And that concludes my report. Deputy Mayor?
I just want to comment because we had a presentation about, and this is nothing the council can do, but just something maybe we ought to keep in mind, since we pointed out this is Mental Health Month. In the state of California, as most of you know, many of particularly younger people who have mental health problems are put in jail rather than any kind of facility where they get treatment. And our correctional officers aren't prepared to handle that. That's unfair to the correctional officers. We don't have the space or the prisons for them. It's, it's a monstrosity for those who are having mental health problems because they're agitated and just get worse in jail. It is, it creates, because that's not the way to treat mental health people, it creates a greater danger for the general public. Because since those people aren't properly treated or supervised when they're let out, some of them are violent, and without going through the proper procedures, that puts all of you and all of us at risk. So it's just something that started a long time ago. We decided in the state of California not to take it too seriously about how we handle mental health. mental health. And since this is Mental Health Month, maybe we ought all start thinking more seriously that our present system for handling that problem is broken.
Mr. Denver?
I was hoping that the mayor would speak about his very effective mayor's roundtable speech, and this time it was done with restaurants. And a half a dozen dozen restaurant owners came in and talked about their, their facilities and their concerns. And I think the general consensus was the restaurants were really pleased with us, understood how many that we wanted more restaurants, and had some detail kinds of things on the sign ordinances and stuff. So I thought it was all very connecting with the business community and well done.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. And just a closing comment on that. What was really exciting about that particular roundtable is that three of the restaurant owners have business plans for expansion, and they intend to take advantage of the restaurant incentive ordinance. So we look forward to those applications coming forward. And there are some of your favorite ones out there. I can't name them from up here. That wouldn't be right, but.
Cheesecake Factory.
The Cheesecake Factory. Mr. Edgerton will not let that one go ever until we get that beloved Cheesecake Factory here. Okay, on to the, if that concludes, Councilmember comments, on to the consent calendar, and I believe we have a speaker on this item?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Miller? On 10.5. That was what you put on your slip?
Yes, yes, indeed. "The kingdom of heaven is like treasure hidden in a field. When a man found it, he hid it again. And then in his joy went and stole all he had and bought that field." Matthew 1344. Bought the field to mow down the living, breathing, CO2-absorbing, climate-balancing treasure of an open space and field, the historical buildings and towering trees and burrowing owl nests. No! The historic Bailey Farm Building, so creative and full of history, can't go the way of the bulldozer. What can we do to stop this travesty? The building should be restored and the land around planted with food-bearing trees. There are too many people in Menifee, all depending on imported food. This is an agricultural area. If you don't like the rural heritage, then move to the city. This council cannot continue to supply a clump of commercial actions at the corner of every track housing. If citizens don't like where they move because it doesn't have their stores on every corner, then they can move back from where they came. The city has $298,000 to invest in agriculture, to improve farm income, and should plant fruit trees and garden foods for local restaurants in areas of the open spaces that are not nesting for endangered birds. This money is Phase One of the settlement from House Bill 61.1. There are greener jobs than working in heat-producing buildings and surrounded by concrete. Pack ten partners, the developers, need to go back to LA and sit on their $2 billion. How much greed is enough? Leave the rural atmosphere alone. Carpetbag developers with European investors tearing up California, causing harmful ozone for babies and citizens to breathe. Citizens here can create 760 jobs that the junction claims to generate by staying at home, using computers to make airline and train trips, maintaining medical records, databasing stores' inventory, advertisements with Photoshop, and other computer jobs. The only jobs this development will create will be an emergency response to high winds, quaking substrata, intense fires, droughts, traffic, and pedestrian mishaps and lack of water. This project will cause truck agiton with more rock haulers, concrete mixers, delivery and the trucks delivering forest products. And it will not end. The next set of trucks gassing off will be delivery trucks. Shopping centers generate more car trips than track houses or distribution centers and probably more CO2 generation. They are like mini volcano gassing thermals, going off all day with greenhouse gases trapped by more CO2, heating up the planet. We don't care if you paint the VOC-free paints. You use electric vehicles on the property, plant trees, have a token solar pant.
Ms. Miller, that's your.
With that, Alt entertaining motion for approval of the consent calendar, please.
Shall move.
May I have a second? Roll call vote?
I'm sorry, I missed that second, sir, with the noise. Thank you, Mr. Denver. Councilmember August. Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Councilmember Furman. And Mayor Mann.
Hi. We have no public hearings this evening. On to discussion items. Agenda item 12.1, approved staffing plan for Public Works Engineering Department. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jonathan Smith, your Public Works Director, City Engineer, has a report for you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight the proposed staffing plan for the Public Works and Engineering Department. As most of you may know, engineer, the engineering department is involved in many aspects of the daily city functions, including review and permitting of land development projects, as we've been discussing here. We also meet with developers and work out agreements. We inspect all the grading that is done in the city. We manage the landscape, lighting, and maintenance districts, do the final inspections for all the homes that are constructed in the city, and we issue all the encroachment permits for work by utility companies within the right-of-way. Public Works Department is responsible for maintenance and operation of all the city-owned facilities and right-of-way items, such as we maintain the public streets, streetlights, drainage facilities, and the lovely traffic signals that everyone likes. And we try to keep down the weeds within the city as well as abating the graffiti. We're responsible for traffic engineering, management of street sweeping services, solid waste services, and we are also responsible for emergency response to storm events, traffic accidents, and we coordinate with police and fire for those emergencies as well. Since January 1st, 2013, about the time I started here, the city has experienced a consistent and substantial increase in development activity. Thirty-five grading permit applications this fiscal year. There were only about 22 last year. We have 21 improvement plan applications this year, only 14 last year. Currently, we have over 70 active development projects in the city, which average about three plan check reviews, which take about two hours of time. On April 30th, 2013, the City Council approved the city's first five-year capital improvement program with the, what we refer to as Big Seven Projects. As a result of the increased development activity, the implementation of the city's first five-year capital improvement program, the demand for services provided by Public Works and Engineering Department has significantly increased. Staff is recommending the transitioning from the use of three currently authorized consultant positions to three full-time city employee positions. This will provide a method to effectively manage the growing needs of the city while at the same time achieve significant cost savings. The table on the following page highlights what we're currently paying. Over the last year, we've paid these, for these three consultant positions, $526,000. And with the proposed positions that we're recommending tonight, the cost would drop down to 385, 386,000 with the savings of over $140,000 a year to the city. Staff recommends approval of the Public Works and Engineering Department's staffing plan to transition the consultant contract outsourced work to full-time city employees by authorizing the three, the following three positions. Senior engineer for land development, senior engineering, senior engineer for capital improvements, and a senior public works inspector. That concludes my presentation.
Could you go back to the spreadsheet, the chart?
You got it.
Council, do you have any questions of staff?
Please help.
Mr. Denver?
Thank you. Did anybody do a study on the PERS portion of this? There's some cities in our area that, that have had some difficulties when their employees retire. Anybody do a study on what the cost would be if these new people or the existing people were to all retire?
Thank you. I'll ask Ms. Willoughby to address that.
Thank you, Councilmember Denver. The study of PERS is an ongoing function that I perform, and the analysis is ongoing. We do some, expect some increases over the next five years, beginning in 2016, 17, due to some changes that PERS has made. We have managed most of that on, by managing the employee contribution. As you know, we implemented a two-tier system in 2011, and then we have pension reform for new employees to the PERS system under a different contribution. I perform the analysis, and I'll bring more information to you as a council as part of the budget workshop of the ongoing costs. I do feel at this time, the savings from transitioning to the city employees from consultants outweigh any costs of PERS.
May I, may I ask?
You have the floor.
Thank you. So did I hear you say that if you had 20 years in, 25 years in right now, maybe not all with city, obviously, but you, and our contribution of it was 10 years, what would be right now our responsibility to take care of you? Would we have to put any more money back into this? Would the city put any money into it? Or would this totally be a state or PERS problem? Why did San Bernardino, San Diego, and everybody else get into trouble and we wouldn't?
San, they're all very unique cases, and each city has its own problems. San Bernardino had many issues with public safety contracts, which really increased their public, their PERS contributions to a unsustainable level, and they also fell behind on their contributions.
And so we obviously haven't fallen behind in our country?
That's absolutely correct.
And we don't have any trouble? So if you retired right now, the city of Menifee would not have to contribute to you ever out of our monies?
That's correct. For myself personally.
Anybody else?
I can't speak for each individual person.
Why not?
Let's get, are you, were you, okay, Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, I'd like Terry or Mr. Johnson, just a clarification on this, for the, particularly for the people in the audience who perhaps don't understand how PERS operates. If we look at an ongoing annual cost, looking at this analysis that you have up on the screen, I look at the ongoing annual cost when we're contracting out, and then I look at the requested new positions, and I looked at the total 385,993 as opposed to 526,640. Does that, I'm assuming that includes all contributions to PERS.
That's correct.
I think, if I understood Councilman Denver correct, I think the question he's asking is after that senior engineer and all of those employees retire, do the citizens of Menifee have any further ongoing costs out of the city of Menifee? Or is all of the retirement obligations taken up by the state through the PERS program?
They're made through our employer contributions as we pay, as we go.
So at the end of 20 years, we owe nothing? We have no liability whatsoever?
I can't speculate what's going to happen in 20 years. I expect that we will make our contributions.
Well, now, Terry, excuse me, I'm not asking for speculation. I'm basing it on the laws of today and the contracts that we have today, projecting out 20 years based on today's laws. All of these people that we hire, when they retire in 25 years, will we owe them a nickel, a dime, a dollar, anything? Or does it, all of the responsibility and liability of the citizens of Menifee end at the time they retire?
If I could jump in, I think the best way to explain it is that we pay as we go along. So when the employee doesn't work here anymore, the PERS contribution does not be paid for them anymore. It goes, it goes, it goes directly from a paid perspective, monthly, to PERS, and then PERS calculates that and PERS pays out of it. So you're, you're continually paying for the employees that are here for future, but we've done an adjustment here, two different tiers. Employees as of July 1, 2013, Terry can attest this, I believe, pay their full 8%. 2011, pay their full share of the city's contribution of their PERS. Correct?
Employee portion.
Employee portion.
And however, PERS, part of the calculation that PERS puts into your employer rate is to cover those future retirement costs, so that you're paying, if you're paying the employer portion appropriately as, as we go along each month and each year, then when the employee retires, their retirement is covered.
And so then hypothetically, Joe Doakes retires at $80,000 when he's 60 years old. He lives for another, based on the actuarials of today, he lives for another 40 years. And in that next 40 years, the PERS program, statewide PERS program, will pay every single dime that he's due.
That's correct, because they've already done those.
These folks won't be on the hook for anything.
That's correct, because they've done those actuarial assumptions, and they've built that into our employer rates.
Good enough. Thank you.
Mr. Denver?
Why did Canyon Lake, when they were just recently, last year, deciding whether to continue?
Mr. Denver, I'm gonna, I'm pleased. I know what you're getting ready to ask, and you cannot compare Menifee's actuarial figures, our staffing levels, and our contributions to PERS to the city of Canyon Lake. The city.
Let me ask the question?
Well, because you're confusing the public. Okay, go ahead and ask your question.
I, I just don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think that this, I don't think we know the answers to these things. And I think the Canyon Lake, when they decided whether they were going to go into PERS or not, they, one of the determiners were is that PERS asked the city of Canyon Lake to give them hundreds of thousands of dollars so that they could get out of PERS and do their own system, a 401K, which they thought would be cheaper. Why are you not telling us about that?
Because they pulled out, I'm gonna, I'm serious. They pulled out of CalPERS on their own, and based upon the actuarial study of the employees that are no longer working with Canyon Lake, they had to pay X. We're not in that situation.
Did I hear you say that if we were to shut down Menifee today and drop everybody out of PERS, you have, you know now that we would not owe PERS any money? Is that right?
No, can't say that.
I'm confused.
That's not what we were saying.
Let's, may I bring the discussion back to the topic at hand, please? If I can ask a question, I think what my colleagues are concerned about are unfunded liabilities under GASB 54, Government Accounting Standard Rule 54, which states that we have to place funds in CalPERS for retirement purposes for employees that participate. And the changes that the previous council made, wherein new hires pay their full share of CalPERS, that helps future liabilities for the city of Menifee. Is it not true that we currently have zero unfunded liabilities for the city of Menifee for our employees?
That's correct.
So, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, in that case, I want to follow up on Councilman Denver's position, because I think what he's doing, he's fast-forwarding and saying, well, politically, what if at some point, 10 years down the road, we said we're going to go into a 401K program? Does that mean that we can go into a 401K program without any liability in reference to these employees?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the answer to that question is no. Excuse me, I don't think the answer to that question is yes, because if we pull out, if we were to make a policy decision to pull out of CalPERS someday and offer our own retirement plan for our own city employees, there's going to be an actuarial decision made by CalPERS, and they're going to tell us how much money we have to put up to pull out of CalPERS in order to cover those future costs.
Translation, if I understand you correctly, when we move into this program without beginning with 401K, we're locking ourselves into the PERS program without being able to move into the 401K program without a very substantial liability being imposed upon the local taxpayer.
There is a actuarial fee that has to be paid if we were to pull out of CalPERS. Isn't that correct?
That is correct. And we could, if they, if at some point you want to look forward to pulling out of CalPERS, we could develop a financing mechanism to. CalPERS, we could develop a financing mechanism to arrange, so you could do that in the future. You could build that into our budget, but there is a cost to pulling out of CalPERS they have to provide for future.
So do we, do we have the money for such a thing? Do we have, do we have the money for such a thing? We put something like that away? Does anybody, has anybody studied this? Just, just say to me that.
City Attorney?
Well, without trying to be too forward here, the questions you're asking about PERS are really not on the agenda. Now, I realize that they're incidental to the decisions you're going to be making, but, you know, if you want to talk about PERS and you want to talk about options like this, then you really need to bring that back as a topic for discussion, because I don't think staff is prepared to go ahead and give you the answers you're looking for at this point.
Well, excuse me, Counselor, that doesn't preclude the council from asking a question about PERS that is related to what is on the agenda at this time.
That's correct. What I'm saying, however, is the discussion of it, the questioning about how would we fund it, where would we go with it, all of that begins to cross into a different topic here. So, but certainly it's incidental to what you're looking at.
With, with respect to the presentation of the staff, the transition plan from consultants and contractors to these three full-time new hires, the figures that are, correct me, are the figures that are reflected on this chart, total compensation costs? Salary, benefits, CalPERS, et cetera, et cetera. That's the total cost to the new employee that's reflected here, and the savings that are reflected by making this transition are at the bottom.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. So if the council wants to have a future discussion about CalPERS and offering different retirement products for our future city employees, I think that would be a good and healthy discussion to have at a future council meeting. But if we could, if we could bring the focus back on to the topic at hand and make a decision about the city engineers' request to transition from consultants to full-time staff, I would appreciate that being discussed, or I'll entertain a motion if the discussion is finished. Mr. Furman?
Jonathan, are these positions here, are they the people that are already working under contract, are they going to switch to this, or are you, you going to hire new?
We're going to recruit, we're gonna have an open recruitment for these positions. Anyone's welcome to submit an application if they qualify for the position.
Even the, the ones that are working now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff for this particular item? Is there a motion to approve the staffing plan for the public works and engineering Are there any public speakers on agenda, item 12.1?
No, sir, I'd have brought it to you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the staffing plan?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second Jonathan.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please. I was hoping that if you, if my colleague on the finance committee wasn't going to, I was going to. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Denver?
Hi, I'm Steve.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Hi.
Councilmember Furman?
Hi.
Councilmember August?
Hi.
Mayor Man?
Hi.
Thank you.
Agenda item 12.2, approve Phase 1 staffing plan for Community Services Department. Mr. Johnson, what I'd like, we have speakers on this item, yes? How many speakers do you have? Not that that really matters, but.
Five.
Okay, what, what I think I'd like to do is exercise the discretion of the mayor here and hear the staff report first, then we'll take public comments. There might be some questions that get answered with the staff report.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As we brought this to the finance committee, we had a goof that I didn't catch, underrecommended action of number one, we have approved the, the Community Services Department Phase 1 Staff Plan to implement, it should say Park and Recs Program for the west side of 215. It was the council's instruction to move forward and detach from the county and set up our Park and Recs Department Community Services with facilities on the west side of 215. That's my error, I apologize. I would like to turn it over to Robert Lennox, our Community Services Director, and he will have your report for you.
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor Man and members of council. As, as City Manager mentioned, this staffing plan is intended to address staffing needs relative to operations and maintenance of all park facilities and ride, associated rightaways on the west side of town. As you recall, back on February 5th, council did review Park and Recs Program Plan and then provided direction to staff to pursue initially west side operations plan, and this is yet another iteration of that approach by staff. Currently, staff has been in discussions with Riverside County EDA, who currently is on contract to maintain and operate the parks on the west side, as, as well as a few of the rightaways that are on the west side as part of CSA 145 and CSA 33. In efforts to fulfill the direction provided by council, staff has issued a notice of cancellation or a notice of non-renewal to the county for the upcoming fiscal year, and then transfer that responsibility for those facilities over to city, in, in particular, the Community Services Department, to operate on a moving forward basis with an effective date of July 1, 2014. On the screen, you'll see the scope of responsibilities, which does incorporate those parks and landscape areas that are part of CSA 145 and 33, as well as a few additional responsibilities that are coming online as the city grows and will be, I guess, active and operational but by July 1 of 2014. That incorporates seven parks, which is almost 40 acres, nine landscaped areas, over 500,000 square feet, and then three centers, about 15,000 square feet, which does incorporate also the Community Services Headquarters, to be placed at the Annex Building adjacent to the Case Nissaros Intergenerational Center. As you'll recall, the fiscal year 2013-14 approved budget authorized three positions within Community Services Department. That was Community Services Director position, which is my position, a Senior Admin Analyst, and then a Management Analyst, whose time is actually split within the department as well as with the responsibilities of CDBG, Application Processing, and various programs associated with that. The proposed plan, as it's stated in the staff report and as you see on the screen, would grow the department effectively by nine additional positions. However, some of those positions are part-time hours, and so the equivalents you see on the screen are two for Community Services Leader hours, a total of 4,160 hours. So in total, the proposed new staffing plan would include 12 full-time equivalent positions, which incorporates the three existing that are currently funded by the general fund. The impact as a result of this plan, as I mentioned, the cancellation of the contract with EDA for the service areas totals approximately $650,000. The plan is to reallocate those contract funds and combine them with funding from CFDs 2012-1, -2, a soon-to-be-created CFD as a citywide covering CFD, as well as CDBG, and again, the same general fund contribution totaling, covering the total salaries and benefits amount of $934,114. The operations and maintenance budget line items would be considered during the fiscal year 14-15 budget process, and again, that would include all the incidentals, including park landscape maintenance contracts, as well as various M&amp;O related with running programs at the parks. That concludes my, my report. As you may, as I point out, in the staff report, there is a, an attached organizational chart that does list the duties and responsibilities of each of the proposed positions to help the department and the city offer the services on the west side of the I-215 to the public. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Similar to the, similar to the chart from the engineering staffing plan, what is the net savings by not going with ADA again and hiring our own folks to run the west side parks and services?
There isn't necessarily a net savings, because the intent of transferring this over is to provide the local control and provide a quality of service, not only in the condition of the parks, but also the operation of the programs to the residents. As listed in the fiscal impact section, there is an impact on the, on the general fund of $219,941 as an estimate.
And with the, assuming that CFD 2014-X comes online, what's the estimated revenue from that to help offset the impact of the general fund? Do we have that data?
No, we're in the middle of assessing the budget. We should have figures for that probably within the next few weeks. It should be significant, though. That's the first phase of the Regent Town Center with the sports park and the amenities there, so there will be significant revenue there.
And the, if I recall from the finance committee meeting, there, we're, we have a CSA study ongoing as well, that appears to be some neighborhoods and some homes that are not actually in any CSA, and so therefore are not contributing to the parks assessments?
That's absolutely correct. Council approved a previous contract, at a previous meeting, council approved a contract with Webb and Associates for our district administration, and they are auditing every, the CSAs and CFDs and LMDs to make sure that every area is covered within the city of Menifee, that it should be.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor.
So when we look at the fiscal impact, and we total these up, some of these, of course, are projections, they're not current funds. CDBG are always tentative, not certain. And the general fund, as you pointed out, is roughly around 300,000 at this point. I'll let Councilman Furman speak to this if he wishes, but he reminded me of, I believe it was this 12.2 and the original motion that was made, and it involved a workshop. I would certainly be a lot more comfortable with that before we proceeded, but let me leave it to the rest of my colleagues at this point.
Mr. Furman?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak on that, Wally. The original motion that was made in the, in the February 5th motion, and I'll, I'll read it to you, okay? Councilman Denver made a motion to continue the community service program and, and a planned workshop to discuss the possibilities, and to give, basically to give Valleywide a chance to give us a, their price on maintaining the parks on the, the west side of the freeway. Now, that was the motion that was made. The, it seems to me like the direction that the city is going is flat-out taking control of the parks without any latitude and leaving Valleywide a chance to give us a price on what it's going to cost. Now, the workshop was a good idea, and I think all five of the councilmen voted for it, and the questions that were brought up here tonight, I can see possibly 30 to 40 employees that are going to jump on the, the CalPERS system, and we don't really know what the CalPERS system really does, we've touched on some items here. And these items should be brought out at a workshop before this council really makes a decision on if we're going to go completely citywide or not. These are my feelings, and I don't think we can make a, I cannot make a decision tonight because I don't have enough information. Thank you.
Yeah, good points. I don't, I think you're mixing apples and oranges, though. We're not, what, what we're not talking about tonight is a citywide decision here. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, I believe the original discussion that we had on the 5th was a several-pronged approach. And my understanding of what happened that night seems to be a little different than, than some other folks. The pronged approach that we talked about was detaching from EDA Community Services on the west side, setting up a Community Services Department, because we had several new parks coming online. And Valleywide then did come to the podium and, and offer an opportunity to, to do maintenance and operations. We did talk about a Community Services Department workshop. We're in the middle of hiring Community Services Director, which we did, which was in our budget, which we had the authority to do, so we did. And setting up the west side of 215 was really, really our issue. We believe that not only can we build a Community Services Department that will connect this council, this city hall, our economic development opportunities, and this community together, we feel that's the best way to, to move forward. I think that was evident in our, in our staff report on March, on February 5th. That seemed to be the feedback we got. We moved forward in that direction, brought Robert Lennox on staff, put together a wide variety of things, including at our last meeting with the ordinance that we are doing a second read of tonight, a senior advisory council, a youth advisory council, a trail, a park trails, open space master plan. I believed I had every indication to move forward on the west side of 215 with creating our Community Services Department. And I believe the issue was whether we were going to move to the east side of 215, not whether or not Valleywide was going to move west to the west side. That's my understanding.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, I think there's a bias on the side of staff, and I am to share that bias, that ideally, it would be better to simply have a citywide parks and recreation run by the city, period. That is my bias, that's where I'd like to see us go. However, there were presentations by Valleywide, and as some of us begin to get more information, that was in reference to the east side, there were some real questions as to whether or not we were prepared to step in and do everything they do, and I think many of us got an education they perhaps do more than we realized. So that, I would agree with you, Mr. Johnson, has been set aside, the east side. The concern I have about the west side is not proceeding, but I would personally feel more comfortable, unless there's some urgency, why we couldn't in the interim have a public workshop so that we can really flesh out some of these concerns that we have, these, particularly the fiscal impact. I don't personally believe that the council, or at least I don't, and I'm fairly good with numbers, has a full grasp of the potential fiscal impact for what we're about to do on the west side. That doesn't mean that it wouldn't be the proper thing to do, but I think, again, unless there's some urgency, it might be better to have that workshop first, as quickly as we can. But I'll just throw it back to you and the council, see where we are.
Mr. Furman, and then Mr. Johnson.
I mean, one thing I can see is there's a, an awful lot of equipment that, that would have to be purchased. I mean, you've got lawn mowers, trimmers, everything, and then you, then you're going to have vehicles, you're going to have a storage yard, and there's probably an estimated million dollars worth that you're going to have to spend just to equip this, this effort. Is that being taken into consideration on your cost?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, those are, that's, those are great points. Terry could probably address the revenue issue, because we haven't even talked about the revenue that's going to be generated by the programs we're going to put out, that's going to offset the expenses in the general fund, but I'll get to that in just a second. You mentioned equipment. Most of the equipment, in fact, 90-some percent of it was purchased through CSA funds from assess- assessments on properties here in Menifee. That equipment and that, for maintenance and stuff, that, that comes to us. We're asking for a full accounting of everything that the county has paid through the tax assessments of the people of Menifee, and that stuff stays here. Talking about lawn mowers, edgers, vehicles, all of that needs to have a cost accounting because the-
The stuff that Valleywide has, we're going to take-
No, we're not talking Valley. We're only talking about the west side of 215 right now. I don't want to confuse the two issues. So on the west side of 215, there were former county service areas that provided tax assessments on, on properties on the west side of 215 that used those tax assessment funds to purchase all the equipment that you're talking about that we need. Well, those, that equipment, those items need to stay in Menifee along with the vehicles, so that transfer of property comes to the city. That's what we, we're getting a full accounting of. So we're not walking in saying we've got nothing to, to run our parks with. We have all the equipment that's been purchased through the CSAs prior. They don't get to, the county doesn't get to keep that and move that somewhere else. That would be a little bit of a misappropriation of, of funds and assessments, we believe. So if Robert wants to address any of the revenue issues or that operation of maintenance that I just talked about, or Terry, if you want to jump in on the relationship between the general fund and the revenue that's going to offset the cost, please.
Correct. And I should have clarified a little more in the fiscal impact. There's minimal impact to the general fund from taking this over. Most of the costs will be borne by the, by the districts as they are now, and the CFDs, as council has approved them. We have the two existing, and we expect to form another one. The costs of the new employees are, will, that are being placed in the general fund as outlined in the staff report, will also generate offsetting revenue from events and facility rentals. So that cost, additional cost, will be covered by the revenue.
Can you, can you put an approximation when you say minimal fig, minimal impact?
Well, we, we are doing projections as we speak for, as for fiscal year 14, 15 revenues, as you know, and I expect that it would cover, we expect it to cover the cost of the new employees that are placed in the general fund, and Robert can speak to that.
Well, he spoke, for example, of $300,000 out of the general fund.
But that includes existing employees as well. Employees that are already in the general fund, not new employees. So the differential between the new employees and the old employees is less the revenues, that's a minimal difference.
Mr. August?
Let's me ask a couple of questions here. I think I understand this. We're talking about-
Is Mike?
We're talking about a contract that's effective June the 30th, who would turn the services now on the west side of freeway from the county over to the city. If we go ahead and do this, it doesn't presume, it doesn't presume that in the future, that in the future, the city can decide to hire Valleywide to take over both services or one services. Is that, is that true? We're not, all we know is that the, we're moving away from the county, but it does, if we make that decision tonight, it's not a presumption that we're not going to go with Valleywide if the council should determine it down in, in the future. So if, if that's true, and let's say, say, for instance, hypothetically speaking, the council did decide to go with Valleywide down the future. If we make a decision on June the 30th to go with ADA, does that cause us any extra hardships or problems rather than doing like Mr. Edgerton says tonight and go for a workshop and prolong this out and make a decision? In other words, are we, if we decide to approve this contract tonight, are we, are we causing ourselves more problems if in the future we decide to go with Valleywide for both service on the west side and the east side?
Mr. Johnson?
I believe the answer to that is no. We need to move away from the county. That, that's our objective, to have local control. Once we have local control of either side, this is, we're talking about the west side of 215 now, and the city would then have control of that, now you are running programs and connecting with your community in the way that you would want based on your local control with city staff. Would you at some point have an opportunity to make a different decision and go somewhere else? Yes, you do. You're policymakers. That's, that's what you do. However, the county provides a limited service to us. They knew that there was going to be a transition. The current contract was for five years. It was actually for, for a one, three-year, one, two-year contract with three one-year options. So they knew that that would be coming to an end at some point, and we, we fully believe that not only do we own the parks on the west side of 215, but we should be in control of them with how they look, how much we spend in them, creating a connection with our community, running programs that, that the city and the community can connect with. Plus, now, with most of the, not most, with all of the development that's coming in on the west side, the parks that are being built by the developers are being accepted by the city. So we are gathering our own collection of parks on the west side that we believe we can manage better than contracting with someone else to do it.
Councilmember Denver?
A couple of quick questions. What would happen to the employees we're hiring if we went with Valleywide for the other side, for the west side?
When we have the policy decision about that, we'd have to take that into consideration. Do, do you, I mean-
I understand. You don't have to answer.
I don't have, I don't have an answer for you.
What would happen to the equipment that we bought that Valleywide already has?
Okay, are, are we talking about the east side now?
We're talking about the west side.
Valleywide didn't buy any equipment on the east, on the west side.
Well, it, it, see, did, did somebody study the fact that ADA brings in equipment from Riverside County?
That they purchased with CSA funds by taxing the residents of Menifee.
So ADA only worked for Menifee? They didn't work for Riverside County Park?
That's not what I said.
I know, but don't they, didn't they use the equipment from Riverside County to help us here, just like Valleywide uses-
If they purchased the equipment from the Menifee tax assessments in Menifee, we get that equipment.
Completely, I understand. But it seems to me that the equipment that we're, we are, we bought is going to be extra having to do, because Valleywide has the equipment to come over and do that if we so chose. So we're going to have employee issues if we were to devalue it, and, but, you know, that's not even it. I wanted to have this, the study was nothing to do with any of that. I wanted to talk about the programs. Here's what they, ADA did. Here's what we can do. Here's the kinds of things we do. Here's why it will be bringing the citizens closer to Menifee, which was your point, and a valid point, and as with, with Mr. Edgerton, I have a preconceived notion that it would be better to take care of the parks locally. But I thought we were going to discuss the events and the, not just grading, doing the grass, but what we were going to do. One of the problems is, is that, no offense, there's Valleywide and ADA don't talk, and they don't communicate well, and we don't have anything virtually to say about the programs. I thought you were going to come back to us and say, here's the kind of things we're going to do. And that's, all looks like it's in the future, after we hire the employees and the equipment.
Mr. Johnson, and then Deputy Mayor?
The, the goal of assuming the parks and the, and the programs, and I'm going to turn it over to Robert in a minute, he can give you a better flavor. He, this is, this is, this is his bailiwick. This is what he does. This is his professional choice to do, and he'll talk about the programs that we can improve upon and we can also expand. It, it wasn't to delete or erase any of the current programs that are, that are being active. It was to connect our, our community with our, with our city and through community services, which has far greater reaches when you talk to the business community and you talk about economic development opportunities and the amenities we can provide through connecting our residents and the people that want to, want to move here because of that, and then formulate their, and bring their businesses here. But Robert, if you could expand on, if we could go into, if you would like, a short discussion about the programs that you've done and seen in other communities that aren't here, because you've already done that assessment, and, and talk a little bit about, about your strategy.
Sure. The proposed scope of programs is intended to change from what ADA Community Services currently providing. We've been in discussions with them for the last couple of months about what they currently offer and, and the staff, the small staff that we have now have been analyzing that and finding ways to improve upon it. Those include everything from after-school programs to summer camp. You, you're probably more familiar with the Mars program as, as that summer experience, as well as classes and activities that currently take place over at Case Naceros. Those would all remain. There is no intent in this transition to erase any of those, as the city manager mentioned, but only improve upon them. And by having the local control, we can, we can better fine-tune the delivery of service to the residents. One of the discussions that has taken place regarding Case Naceros is about the intergenerational component, and currently the center primarily is focused on senior programs, which is vital. The missing link is, in my opinion, what happens down the street at Lazy Creek, where a ton of youth come in on a daily basis, and unfortunately, there is limited communication or cross-program cooperation between Lazy Creek and Case Naceros, and that's, that's just another area of opportunity to improve. We can offer intergenerational programs that bridge that divide and have young and aging populations jointly experience each other, and as one of the speakers said earlier tonight, learn from those that have gone before them. That is part of the intent. In addition, though, it is to coordinate efforts across the freeway. There are activities that currently Valleywide is offering that if they were in better coordination with, with city programs, we could have better timing and help possibly even cross-promote so we can offer a better blanket of services to all residents, independent of where they live.
The issues of which you speak are exactly the reason why we need to ultimately someday make a decision about how we're going to do this citywide, whether that's Valleywide coming west or the city taking over the entire show. Deputy Mayor?
Well, of course, we're talking about Menifee's property, and again, my bias is on this west side is definitely for the city to proceed with this program, but do we know that Valleywide wouldn't be able to come in with their current programs and their equipment and their personnel, which is all in place, and do this on the west side for less money than we could do it? Do we have those numbers? Do we have those figures?
You know, we don't know that, and there's several reasons why we don't know that. Number one is we've asked maybe two, three times for a full accounting of their revenue versus their expenditures in, in Menifee, and I don't believe that we've gotten all the information we need to make that determination. We have checked their engineering reports. That shows some of the expenditures, but it doesn't show the revenue side. We also know that there are some additional opportunities that they get, that money is taxed or assessed here on the east side that goes out of the area to their general overhead or to a regional facility that's outside of Menifee. So there, there are some issues there, and, you know, we, we believe, we really believe that on the west side of 215, the connection that we're going to need to make with our residents to improve the amenities and the parks and the programs that we're, that we're delivering, we really believe that this is the best thing for the city. It's the best thing for Menifee, and that's why we're here today to talk about the transition on the west side.
Mr. August? Before, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Edgerton, you still have the floor. Did you have a follow-up?
Well, I, it, it seems to me then that the fiscal impact in reference to any decision we would make tonight is unclear. And I think it begs the question, why wouldn't we proceed with a workshop first? Why wouldn't we have Valleywide there and make sure that we understand Valleywide where they're coming from, where we're coming from, and let's crunch these numbers so that before we go down this trail any further, we do have these numbers and we can speak to them clearly. I, I think it would be premature to make this decision tonight.
Mr. Johnson?
I appreciate that, the position that you have. However, if we're talking about the east side, we don't have the information on the east side. We do on the west side, and we presented that today. We've shown the revenue is going to perform to the expectations of the expenditures, so I'm a little-
That's vis-à-vis the ADA.
Correct. I'm a little unclear. We, we came tonight to talk about the west side of 215, and we've morphed into a, a citywide discussion and an east side discussion, and what the focus tonight is, is what the west side, the seven parks we have on the west side, the nine right-of-way landscape areas that we have, and the projects and programs with our facilities on the west side of 215.
I realize, City Clerk, that we have speakers. I'll, we'll take them, we'll get to them in just a moment. Mr. August? We're not done with the staff report.
I, I understand. My, I just wanted to say, my understanding from the last conversation we had in the council is more or less in line with what Mr. Johnson was saying. I do understand what Mr. Edgerton's saying. If we, whatever we decide tonight, if we want to make a decision, I'm perfectly willing to make a decision on whether they, whether to vote on what, what we want to vote on for June the 30th, to send it, to take the services from the county to the city. But I also understand, if Mr. Edgerton and the council decides to say, okay, let's just take our time and make a final decision for both sides of the freeway down the road and, and bring Valleywide in, I don't think that's what the staff wants to do, but I'm, I'm certainly willing to listen to the rest of the comments on the council member and make a vote at that time.
Let me make a couple of comments before we take some speakers and then we can proceed. I'm, I'm in agreement with some of the comments that have been made from a partial standpoint. I, too, maintain the same bias that Mr. Edgerton and Mr. Denver have with respect to the future, and I'll have to, you know, deal with that bias in the, at the right time. But I'm glad you mentioned what you did, Mr. August, just now, as well as Mr. Johnson, because what's before us tonight is how are we going to manage the west side parks beginning July 1, which is two and a half months away? And there's been some previous discussion by this council and some previous decisions by this council to give direction to staff to proceed in this manner. That is why the staff report came before the finance committee. That's why the staff report is here tonight, for us to decide on this particular staffing plan on the west side with the looming decision that ADA is not going to be here any longer. Recall, too, the last council meeting that we had when we implemented the senior advisory committee, the youth advisory committee, the parks and trails map overlay, as well as the Parks Recreation and Trails Commission. I recall the discussion from the last council meeting that we, I, I recall the council discussion from the last meeting that it was going to be the role of the new commission as we seat them to, to conduct that workshop first in terms of how we're going to manage the parks in the future with respect to Valleywide coming west or Valley, or us divesting from Valleywide, keeping in mind, of course, that that's not our decision. That's ultimately a recommendation to the county local agency formation commission and not ours and ours alone. So I think with the issue that we have tonight, it's very dialed in, it's very focused, and your comments about how we're going to do this in the future is very, very important. We shouldn't, we shouldn't act hastily on the east side, and that's not what we're here to discuss tonight, is the east side. We're here to discuss what's going to happen on July 1 as presented by staff. So if there's no objections at this point or no additional comments on the staff report, I'd like to go ahead and take public commenters on this agenda item, and then we can bring it back inside the rail and decide what we're going to do. First speaker, please.
And Pika?
The Community Service Director requests for the city council to approve the Community Service Phase 1 staffing plan to implement a citywide parks and recreation program for the city of Menifee that include hiring nine new office personnel to assume the operations and maintenance of all owned, city-owned parks effective July 1, 2014. While that is not what I recall the city council instructing staff to do, and the video recording confirms it. The city council motion was very clear. Staff was to come back with a citywide plan. Staff was not instructed by the city council to assume operations and maintenance of all city-owned parks on July 1, 2014. Mr. August clearly stated in his motion they were not committing, committing to either citywide or Valleywide district. The city manager wants, wants to take over the city parks and plans on taking over the Case Naceros Center for his new employees. This is the first step in kicking out the seniors and young citizens from that facility. The city manager will say, we only plan on taking over the annex building effective July 1, 2014, again depriving the citizens of the freedom of utilizing the annex building to make money for senior or youth programs. The city manager has done just the opposite of what Mr. Nelson recommended and continues to have a city divided. The city council said it did not want a city divided and clearly stated at the last meeting they wanted a workshop where they would decide- they wanted a workshop where they would decide if the city would take over all the parks or extend a contract to Valleywide or file a detachment application with LAFCO. What part of the instruction did the City Manager not understand? The Phase 1 expenditure analysis consists of hiring nine new office help, no analysis on equipment or landscaping personnel included in Phase 1. The impact on the general fund will be well over $219,941 when you count the equipment, personnel, or contracting maintenance. And let's not forget additional CFD and CSA funds will also be impacted by this phase I take Phase 1 takeover of all parks. Stop wasting taxpayer dollars to implement a Phase 1 before the council has decided if we're going to go with Valleywide or Citywide. We will still have a divided city if the council approves what staff is recommending. The City Manager has found ways to add more police in Menifee as violent crimes were up 200% in Menifee in 2013. Why hire personnel at taxpayer expense who will get laid off if the council decide to go with Valleywide? All you have to do is extend the contract with Riverside County six months to a year until the council makes the decision. I recommend this council rephrase the staff report to plan not to implement Phase 1 on July 1, 2014.
Next speaker, please.
Dean Wetter.
Honorable counsel, mayor, council members, members of the public. I'm Dean Wetter, General Manager for Valleywide Recreation and Park District. And I know I've been here before and said this before, but I am deeply insanely passionate about what Valleywide does, its staff, its board members, its coaches, its volunteers. In fact, last year, the coach and volunteer log for us saved the district about a half a million dollars with their volunteer hours. I'm also grateful to the parents. The parents have a huge sacrifice as well. They're devoted to taking their children to programs. They rush home from work, and they're an integral part of recreation programs. And it illustrates why sportsmanship starts at home. 24% of schoolchildren in Menifee participate in a Valleywide program. Valleywide has a proven track record and a history in Menifee. We are woven in the fabric of Menifee. We are also celebrating our 25th year right here in Menifee. Overall, district-wide, we celebrate four decades in bringing that experience to the table. We are recognized by our peers as one of the most efficient and effective recreation and park districts in California. Serving a population of over 200,000 nearing 250,000, we take pride in our economy's scale, and that allows us to leverage our resources to get the job done at the lowest cost. We are all about what is best for the community. One would expect that a workshop, as it was suggested, with the community input would be held before an important decision such as this that's before you today, a commitment of financial resources, employees, and their families. Please consider this in your decision-making process. And I know I mentioned this before, but in 1989, we started here in Menifee with La Paloma Park, and today we're proud that we're 25 years strong. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Ken Willhite.
I'm sorry, we didn't, who?
Ken Willhite.
Mr. Willhite, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, staff, my name is Ken Willhite. From your discussions, I had to quickly revise my presentation for today. But in reviewing the minutes, I find a couple of Mr. Johnson's responses to the questions to be disingenuous. First of all, the direction given to staff on the February 5 minutes was accurately reported by Mr. Furman and Ms. Pika. The direction given to the staff was to continue to implement staff-recommended citywide view of a community services program with a planned workshop to discuss possible approaches to determine how that can be accomplished, including options of Valleywide and city-run services. That workshop clearly hasn't happened yet. Also, in the response from Valleywide, Mr. Johnson talked about their accounting practices for the services they run on the east side of the freeway, but I didn't hear him say that they were approached to give any kind of input on the services on the west side. It was, I think it was a non-responsive answer. And the claim that the date is a little late to do anything other than take control of the parks on the west side, if they had done what they were directed to do back in February, it wouldn't be too late to do the right thing. And dilly-dallying and not doing the right thing is not an excuse for doing the wrong thing because time is close to running out. So I'd suggest that staff do whatever it takes to get the job done right. Thank you.
Keep the applause down to a minimum, please. Next speaker.
Glenn Holmes.
Excuse me, Ms. Pika.
You're not talking to me.
Ms. Pika, I am, as the Chair of this body. I am speaking to you right now. Please stop. We don't need to hear your voice from the audience. You've had a chance to speak? Okay, thank you. Thank you very kindly. I appreciate your understanding. Sir.
Thank you. My name is Glenn Holmes, and I'm Mr. Mayor and Counsel. As a, it appears to me that, Mr. Man, you said this was not about Valleywide. However, it looks like the City of Menifee, the staff, is staffing up a million dollars worth of bureaucracy to run the parks in the district. And if you go ahead and staff this, a million dollars, by the way, is not going to cut one blade of grass. That's just for the bureaucracy that's going to manage the parks on the west side as of now. Obviously, you're going to make a move on the east side with Valleywide. However, there's an elephant in the room, is LAFCO. Are you sure that LAFCO is going to allow you to do that? Nobody knows. So why would you staff it at a million dollars if you don't know you're going to, if you can use that staff for both sides? It seems like that's going to be a pretty top-heavy bureaucracy, just staffing it for one side if you don't know truly what's going to happen. It looks like that the way to do it would be to have a, to not vote tonight, to have, to create this huge bureaucracy, would be to go to a workshop meeting where the citizens and the taxpayers can communicate with you and ask questions like we cannot do at a City Council meeting, that we can have this talk back and forth to find out what Valleywide is going to do and what you guys want to do. It seems like that this should happen. Also, the LAFCO issue should be addressed and put to bed. Then we can create this bureaucracy. As for why we would want to do this, it says there to create, I can't remember your exact words, to create better parks and better this. Now, you guys are all smart men. There's not one thing about Valleywide that you can say that they ever do wrong. I don't think there's any complaints. They run a great program. They have for years. They have great staff. They have these great programs. Why fix something that's not broke? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Jimmy Canales. Did I get that close? Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I spoke with you guys back on February 5 in regards to the Parks and Recreation Division. And also, from a construction background that I'm in, Mr. Johnson, I think you've got a lot on your plate that you need to investigate. The LA County just handing over equipment that was paid for by, what you're saying is taxpayers' dollars from Menifee, well, that same equipment was probably used in Canyon Lake and Riverside, Marino Valley, where their cities also contributed to that equipment as well. And I don't think they're going to just hand it right over without some kind of a fight or argument, which means that come July 1, we're going to be, if you guys proceed with this, we're going to be taking over parks with no equipment. That's just from the construction side. And also, regards to that February 5 meeting, I'm wondering if you were at the end of that meeting when it was brought up numerous times by Councilman Furman and Edgerton that they were not approving your motion, but instead they wanted the workshop done. The workshop date was never set, which it should have been, because had it been set, we wouldn't be standing here today discussing moving forward with the city taking over the west side of the parks. We probably would have been talking about which way are we going, Valleywide or Citywide? The Valleywide motion does not need the LAFCO improvement, which we were told by the City Attorney, and the Citywide does, which requires more time. I don't remember which one of you gentlemen said it, but one of you guys brought up the term, "We're putting the carriage before the horse." Well, here we are, two months later, we're still trying to stick that carriage in front of the horse. That workshop needs to be done. We need to get the figures from Valleywide to find out what it's going to cost to take over the east side of the, I'm sorry, the west side of the community. And then spread those numbers and see, like you had said before, Mr. Edgerton, is it feasible for us to just give it all to Valleywide? As a former coach for Valleywide, a current player for Valleywide, I've brought my kids up through the Valleywide Sports and Rec Program. I've probably coached no less than 300, 400 kids that lived or currently live on the west side of the 215 that play Valleywide sports on the east side. So that Valleywide is all over the City of Menifee already. It's just up to you guys to spread the numbers and say, do we give it all to them, a well-oiled machine, or do we get our hands dirty and try and learn how to run a park and recs division? It sounds to me like by already trying to approve almost a million dollars worth of positions, if you do decide to go to Valleywide at a later date, who's going to be the person that tells those nine positions you no longer have a job? Which one of you guys will be them?
Next speaker, please.
Al Wolfarth.
I've been a volunteer for Valleywide for, going on three decades. Everything I was ready to say has already been said, except I listened to the City Council, and each one of you have some kind of merit. But if you would have had the workshop, I sat right over here in the corner back in February when you had your meeting, and you said you were going to have a workshop that you never had. If you had it, you probably wouldn't have had all these discussions you had up here today. These are the experts right here. Someone back then said about The Deadly Catch, that movie, these are the experts, and the parks are your boat. You, Valleywide has done a great service for your community. Each one of you admitted that. The last time I was at one of your meetings. But again, you didn't fulfill what you're going to say you're going to do. You're going to have a workshop to see what was the best way to go, and you didn't do that. I've got to repeat something I was going to, I heard someone else said, you're trying to fix something that's not broke. Thank you.
Next speaker.
CJ Stonebrucker.
Thanks, Council, residents. As a resident of the east side, I'd just like to say that I think it's important that we have the workshop and allow, you know, all the dynamics of this decision to be discussed, make sure that we understand that, you know, we can have an understanding of how this will affect the people that actually use those parks on the east side, me being one of them. I have two sons, and they're going to be probably brought up in the Valleywide experience. So I'm looking forward to doing that. And I felt like, just in the little bit of time that I've lived in Menifee, I've really experienced the enjoyment that Valleywide has allowed us to have, and I want to continue that. I know they have, every year we attend the, you know, we're honoring the, how long the city's been a city, the anniversary, and there's so many other events, the Fourth of July events that they have, and just so many things. I remember being in Valleywide when I was living in Hemet back a long time ago, and I remember the enjoyment that I had playing softball and all that. And so I want my boys to experience that same excitement and enjoyment that Valleywide brings. I think they're a quality organization, and I think that it's important that we at least consider keeping them for the next 25 years. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
That's all the speakers on this item, Your Honor.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to clear a few things up with my understanding. I'm looking at the May 5 staff report. I'm looking at the recommendations that Mr. Shawn Nelson brought forward to this council, not myself. Number one was assume responsibility of the Audi Murphy Sports Park in April of 2014. We've had to push that out because they're not ready yet for us to take that over. Number two, assume responsibility for the Town Center Regent Park as of July 1, 2014. Not ready to take that over yet. It's not finished there. Three, terminate the contract with the County Riverside and administrate and operate facilities, maintenance areas, parks, and recreation programming for the west side of I-215 as of July 1, 2014. The fourth piece to the puzzle was begin the LAFCO detachment process from Valleywide to administrate and operate facilities, maintenance areas, parks, and recreation programming for the east side of 215 as of July 1, 2015, contingent upon detachment approved by LAFCO. And number five was direct the City Manager to develop a plan for the City Council to appoint a Community Services Commission as of July 1, 2015. This would coincide with the completion of the LAFCO detachment process. That was brought by Shawn Nelson, the executive consultant, who did the research, who built all of the Temecula Parks, who assisted us in developing a budget that included a Community Services Director that we eventually hired. My understanding of the whole entire process on February 5, and I will go back and look at the tape, and I will stand corrected if I believe that I have heard something in error. The first three items on here, assume responsibility of the Audi Murphy Sports Park, the Town Center at Regent Park, and terminate the contract, we believed we had direction to do. What we didn't believe we had direction to do was move forward with the LAFCO detachment that would talk about a citywide process that would have us cross over the freeway and take over the Valleywide areas. That's what the workshop was about. The workshop was not about Valleywide coming over on this side of the freeway and operating our Parks and Rec system. We had clearly stated in that staff report and several times after, in fact, as early and late as last council meeting, when we had our strategic planning workshop, that one of the top goals of this council was to have a citywide approach to a Parks and Rec Department, knowing full well that we had already canceled the contract for the county and that we were moving forward on the west side of 215. The objective was not to get rid of Valleywide because we don't like them and we don't think they do good programs. We do like them. We have a great relationship with them. The gentleman that was just up there mentioned three of the special events that we run in their park at Wheatfield. So we should get the credit for Independence Day and the city's birthday because that's where we pay our money and we run that. And we have over 25,000 people in the park, 20 to 25. So that's our program. We brought that to the city when we incorporated. And we'll continue to work. We connect with the Soapbox Derby. Those are things, though, that currently they divide us, that we're trying to reach over the freeway and work with each other. We use one of their landscapers and one of their contractors for doing most of the installations on our median projects because they're the best around. We're not here to say that they don't do a good job and that we don't like them. What we're here to talk about tonight is the direction that I believed I received on February 5, which was to move forward on the west side of 215 and to then have a workshop about a citywide approach to community services, whether that included, and I believe part of the discussion was, having the city stay on the west side and Valleywide stay on the east side, having Valleywide come over on the west side or having us go over on the east side. But it was never not about canceling the contract with the county and moving forward on the west side of I-215. So either I'm completely off my rocker and don't remember anything, or I've been a part of this process from day one, and I've gotten direction, and we're moving forward, and now is the time that we're coming forward to you for the west side of 215. And we ask that you discuss this as long as you need to, and we'll answer as many questions as we can, and we'd like you to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmember August?
As I said before, that was my understanding, but I also understand the concerns that have been brought up tonight. So I will wait to listen to what you people have to say and what direction you want to go, and I'll make a decision after that. and I'll make a decision after that.
Mr. Denver?
There's no, and I'm not proposing this. I'm not proposing this. I'm not proposing this. The, there's no opportunity to postpone the decision with the county for a month at a time, is there?
Mr. Johnson?
Are you asking it or not asking it?
I am asking.
Oh, so you're asking it?
But I'm not suggesting that that's what we do.
He's asking the question.
There's always an opportunity to go talk and make, and, and we have relationships. We communicate, I believe, very well. We have a professional staff. The county has a professional staff. That's really, in my opinion, not an issue. I believe that we gave council a professional staff recommendation and the time is, we believe, right to move forward and to utilize the city's seven parks that we own on the west side. I bet most people in Menifee don't know the city owns those parks. Well, if we had our own staff and our own people and our own programs in those parks, they would know that we own, that we own them and we operate them. We also haven't talked about the many, 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 many kids in the leagues that aren't involved over on the east side at Valleywide. That they, they come over and, they formulate on the west side. They're looking for practice space. And currently, they go through the county to, to, you know, reserve park space in our own town. So, those are some of the minute, little tiny things that we're talking about, which would give us local control and help us connect better with the community on the west side of 215. So, in a roundabout answer, that was really roundabout. We can communicate with the county and we can try and work something out if that's your desire. That's not our recommendation.
Councilmember Furman?
Two questions would be, it seems like the Lafco decision might take a year.
That's a lengthy process. There's an application, there's a review, there's financials, there's, yeah.
Okay. Secondly, is, I think we have an open Wednesday, April 30. Nothing's happened on that Wednesday. Why couldn't that be a workshop? Just a suggestion.
Was it rhetorical or would you?
It's an open Wednesday. It's the fifth Wednesday of the month.
Got it.
We could use that for a workshop.
Councilmember August?
What day? Is that this month time and this month?
30th is the fifth Wednesday of the month. So, we could use.
Okay. Now, my question would be to Valleywide, can they have all the information that the city would be requesting from them by that time? And would the city be able to prepare and take, get enough time to prepare accurate staff report for this pretty involved situation? And I'm not even sure if Valleywide could come up with the information that the city would be requesting from there.
There's the man right there.
Which we've requested three times that we don't have.
Councilmember Denver?
I think I basically was going to ask the same. Is there enough time to get everything done by that, that point? Because I'm still concerned about the programs, the activities that we do as what we would do that would be superior to what the county does, you know, issue by issue. Because I, I don't see the, I know that it's the city's position, but I don't see the fact that the city owns the park as a big deal, or not owns the park, as a big deal to the citizens. I think they're more interested in the activities that happen in those parks. So, I was hoping that we would have, these seven things are happening on the west side of the park, but we want to do nine things and we're going to improve this since we have hired people who actually know how to do those things.
Mr. Johnson?
I was just going to concur that, you know, it's a policy decision that this council's going to have to make. Does the council want a Parks and Recs department or program like that of Temecula and Marietta? Or does it want one like Hemet and San Jacinto? And there's nothing wrong with it. It's just a policy decision that you have to make. Hemet and San Jacinto's Park and Recreation Department is the Valleywide Recreation and Park District. That's a, that's a policy decision that they made. Temecula detached and created their own community services department. Marietta detached and went through their own community services department. Actually, Marietta's on the, I don't know if they were divided or not, but they took over the CSAs and created their own community services department. So, it really is a policy decision. We're suggesting, again, that we take over the west side from EDA Community Services and operate the west side based on the budget and responsibilities that we presented tonight.
Mr. Furman?
The Peterson Park and Lollit there and Lazy Creek, who takes care of them right now?
The county EDA Community Services under the money that we collect through the tax assessments of the Menifee residents and pay them to do it.
They haul in equipment and get it done.
They've purchased equipment through the CSAs and they use that to.
Right. I didn't know. I just see there.
Correct. And those landscaped areas that you see there and the three centers that you see there.
Peterson Parks has been here a long time, so.
Correct.
They, they maintained it before we were a city.
Correct. Have you been by there lately?
Yeah, the horseshoe pits needs water.
The dog park's there now too and there's some landscaping that needs to be adjusted and there's some painting that needs to be done.
I know. They all could be nicer.
So, with local control and us being able to see that, we can make the improvements that we need to make in a timely fashion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They're not going to fall apart if we take a little more time on this decision.
Mr. Johnson, is there a, when we, the contract with EDA for the management of the parks was a two-year contract with three options to extend. Are we at the limit of that contractual language?
I believe we are. It would, you know, take some communication and some discussion to increase that.
Would it be possible if we were to not make a decision on this staffing plan tonight to get those questions answered and bring it back at a subsequent meeting?
Of course. We can always do that.
And then in the meantime, if we, if it was the council's pleasure, we've already made a decision. I mean, we approved the, we approved the second reading and adoption of an ordinance tonight implementing the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission. So, it would seem to me as a, as a way to move forward, taking into consideration the February 5 discussion as well as the discussion from the last council meeting in April, the one that we had preceding to tonight, was to seat the commission and have them conduct the workshop. That's the discussion that I remember from the last meeting. And, because Mr. Denver brought that up. There seems to be an unwillingness tonight to move this one forward. That's what I sense from my colleagues. So, if we were to say, let's lay this one over for some additional information from the county and tread not lightly, but take another week or two to get some additional questions answered, then could we move forward with the ordinance that's been adopted with second reading tonight? Can we proceed at the next meeting and seat the planning committee, or excuse me, parks commissioners?
What's the timing on the ordinance?
Or do we have a 45-day effectiveness here?
There's a 30-day effective period on the ordinance.
So, 30 days from today?
And I think we're doing an application process too, as outlined in the ordinance. So, there's an application window there for people to apply and then.
Could we appoint in 30 days?
The ordinance is effective 30 days from?
We could do the interview process and have our appointments ready by the 30th.
Sure. We just cut the application period down.
The questions that remain, it seems to me that the question needs to be found out about what can EDA do? I don't care what Valleywide says in this room tonight. I don't think Valleywide can ramp up to make a proposal to manage our parks by July 1. I don't think they can grow the labor that quickly. I just, proof would be in the pudding, but I don't believe that's the case. The, I could be wrong. But what, what do you say about, is that something that staff could support? I know it's a policy decision, but we're looking for some assistance here from the management.
I think I need to hear that a little more clearer. I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
Well, I'm not asking anything. I'm asking, I'm asking, could we, if we lay this over tonight, would you be able to get information from EDA as to whether or not they can go on a month-to-month, as Mr. Denver said, asked? Or if they want to do a six-month? Or if they want to do an additional year extension with, with the possibility of us severing that arrangement in August, as an example, while we make a decision? So, while you're formulating your answer, I'll call upon Mr. August.
Just a question. Am I hearing you say, Mr. Mayor, that we need Parks, Trails Commission to make this decision?
No. No, I'm not saying that.
Okay. All right. Good.
I'm just restating what we decided at the last meeting. And we adopted with an ordinance tonight.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to confirm that. And also, if it's going to take perhaps to the year of 2015, bring Lafco in here to make this decision, if we can turn everything over to Valleywide or not, we still have to make, we still have to make a decision. Or do we not have to make a decision to take the parks from EDA and turn it over to the city?
Well, there are parks now. It's just a matter of who's going to manage them going forward. City staff as presented by staff or extend contract with EDA.
So, what is the workshop, what would be the, what would be the purpose of the workshop?
The purpose of the workshop is to decide how we're going to manage parks in the future on the east side, whether we're going to do a Valleywide approach for the city or whether we're going to divest from Valleywide and make that recommendation to Lafco.
Right. But then we still have to wait a year to hear from Lafco. So, what do we do in the meantime?
We've got to manage our parks on the west side.
And who's going to do that?
That's the question at hand.
Therein lies my confusion as we move forward on the west side because we start talking east side, west side, and we start talking Valleywide. I don't believe that we staff have ever really focused on the east side of 215. We've always talked about the west side of 215. That's what the plan procedure was. That's what the, moving, moving toward the east side was what the debate was going to be about in the policy decision. So, the concern is, again, if we push this off to next, to, let's say, the next meeting, what additional information do you need that's going to help you make a policy decision for us to take over the west side of 215 and the parks that we already own? That's the information that I need to hear from you so I can come back to you.
Mr. Denver?
One more time. I wish I knew what the improvements would be, what the activities would be. Second is, what, the mayor has spoken that he does not believe that Valleywide could operate for a period, for that year, on the west side. And we have, we asked them, have they, can they do that immediately and take it over and operate as? By the way, there's a whole third thing that nobody's talking about. You can have your cake and eat it too. And I'm not saying this is a good idea, but nobody's talking about it. The parks in the city of Menifee theoretically at some point could be owned by the city of Menifee and we could have them run by ourselves or Valleywide or anyone. We would still be in charge. The question is, would Valleywide or anybody allow that? We haven't even, that's what, that's my opinion of what the workshop would all be about.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, did you have a previous comment on this discussion at all?
Not at this time.
Okay. Council, what's your pleasure on this matter tonight? Deputy Mayor?
I'll make a motion that before we proceed. We should have a workshop. And Valleywide should be present and given enough time to provide a presentation so that by the time that workshop is over, we know what they can do vis-à-vis what we can do based on programs and based on the fiscal impact. So, we have a clear picture. As of tonight, we do not have that picture. I'm talking about the west side. We need to know what Valleywide can do on the west side compared to what Menifee can do on the west side. And as of tonight, as expressed by our city manager, we don't have that information. So, my motion is to proceed with a workshop where Valleywide is invited and given the time to make the presentation and develop the information that they're going to need to give us that important presentation.
I'll second that motion.
And you also, you also mean that the city would also give its information about how it would handle things and?
Oh, absolutely. In other words, we're going to compare and we're going to contrast so that not just the people behind this dais understand it, but everybody in the audience would say, we understand the numbers. Because I think, Councilman Denver, you made a good point. It isn't about who runs the program. It's about what the impact is on those people out in the community, on the programs, on the programs that we have for the children, on the programs that we have for the seniors. And if I understood you correctly, I agree with you. I don't think they care so much about who runs the programs, but rather how those programs are run and at what expense.
Would you be willing to modify your motion slightly to include direction to staff to work with EDA for a possible contract extension in, as a, as a stopgap in the event that the workshop doesn't get us to where we need to get by June 30?
Or July?
Or July 1st?
Well, yes, I would. I would be astounded. We know, we, we work very well with county. My assumption is we can deal with the county and they will extend it probably as far as we want it. Isn't that a fair assessment, Mr. Johnson?
The first part is yes. The second part, I'm not so sure. But we'll definitely approach it.
Okay. Anyway, that would be part of the motion. I'll include that.
All right. So, the motion then would be, as motioned by Mr. Egerton and seconded by Mr. Furman, a workshop to include staff direction to work with EDA for possible contract extension in the interim. Is that your motion?
Right. The emphasis is on the city reaching out to Valleywide to be certain that Valleywide has the time to be able to give the kind of presentation so that we can crunch the numbers both as far as what programs are going to be provided the community, at what expense, what is the fiscal impact? So, we can compare and contrast.
At the workshop?
Yes.
Okay. Very well. We have a motion and a second. Is everybody clear on what the motion is?
Can I make, yes, I do. Can I make one comment?
Of course.
And that is, someday we have to, maybe at this workshop, we need to talk about the money issues. In other words, if Valleywide is paid by the funds that is, are collected by Menifee, in Sun City, there's no funds that are collected. My understanding is on the different, every single subdivision has a different amount. I think somebody needs to talk about, in the long term, when the city takes over in some form or fashion, the parks, how does that get worked out? At least philosophically. They all have to be leveled. They all don't have to be leveled. You don't put any more parks in Sun City because they don't pay anything? What, how do we handle this? And then would Valleywide or, or our own staff be able to survive whatever it is that we decide? At least that, maybe not the detail of it, but the choices ought to be discussed at that workshop too.
Like, excuse me, just a clarification because the representatives from Valleywide are here. I just heard this secondhand, that at least a million dollars comes out of the taxpayer for Menifee that's spent elsewhere. How that's integrated into the program, whether that's a fact or not, that's information that's been given to me. So, be prepared to address that when you come to that workshop, if you would, please. And let us be certain that this motion is instructing our management that until they can get that agreement with Valleywide, that it is compatible and convenient for them to have that workshop, that we don't have that workshop until it works together.
And even though I restated the motion, I would like clarification from the originator. I'm sorry, but I want to be very clear on this so that we don't go two meetings down from now and have this same type of discussion because this is rather annoying. Is it your motion to have a workshop for the west side parks? Or is it, was it your motion to have a workshop now for the whole discussion? That, I want a clarification from you on that.
Well, we're, this is addressing the west side.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. So, the motion is, direction to staff to have a workshop for the west side parks with some interaction with EDA to see whether they can extend on their current contractual arrangements. Motion by Mr. Egerton, seconded by Mr. Denver.
And did the second maker accept the addition of?
I didn't second it, but I will if the second.
I need you to, I need you to second the addition.
I didn't second the motion.
I'm sorry. Mr. Furman did. I apologize.
I'm sorry. Didn't want to interrupt. Mr. Furman seconded it and I. Mr. Furman seconded it, and a decision was made to direct staff to possibly contact the county EDA to see if an extension could be made. I want to make sure you approve that amendment that was made, that Mr. Edgerton approved.
An amendment that I made?
Yes. You agreed to an amendment to ask staff-
This is ridiculous.
-to consider contacting the county. Excuse me, I'm having trouble hearing the council. You, you asked for an amendment, or agreed to an amendment to ask staff for a contract with the county EDA to consider extending their contract in the stopgap in order to continue. I want to make sure that the second maker agrees to the amendment that you made on your, your motion.
Do you agree to the amended motion, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, that's all I was asking.
But it, it should be clear in that motion that the thrust of the motion is that staff contacts Valleywide, and that we have a cooperative agreement to have a workshop that's cooperative. It is my speculation that we do not have as good a communication between Valleywide and the city as we might possibly have.
I understood the emphasis.
We want to enhance that.
I understood the emphasis.
Are there any other discussion items or clarifications or questions on this issue? Please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye. Onto Agenda Item 12.3. Approve Agreement of Environmental and Civil Engineering Design Services for the Holland Road I-215 Overcrossing Project. Mr. Johnson?
May I approve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jonathan Smith, your Public Works Director, City Engineer, has a brief update for you on the Holland Road I-215 Overcrossing. Jonathan?
Very brief, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Everyone's familiar with the Holland Road Overcrossing. As I mentioned a few weeks ago, we had a, we had a, God. We interviewed several consultants and boiled it down to one here. There were six proposals, interviewed four firms. Staff evaluated the firms and ranked TY Lynn International as the most qualified for this project. We have the funding for this work. It's actually, comes under our budget currently for what we're projecting. And we recommend approval of agreement for the Environmental and Civil Engineering Design Services for the Holland Road Bridge Overcrossing.
All right, just a question, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
The one that you chose, were they the lowest bidder?
We received sealed proposals. We only opened that of the, there were actually two companies that were tied. We did open two, and out of the two that we opened, they were the lowest. But I also negotiated their contract that did not accept exactly what they gave us. So I, I, I can assure you, we got the best possible price for the work that we're asking them to do.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm concerned that you got the best possible deal. That doesn't mean that the lowest bidder is the best deal. But if it wasn't the lowest bidder, then I, I think the council should get an explanation of why we didn't go with the lowest bidder.
I, I, I hear Terry chiming in right there. But real quickly, the selection was based on qualifications, interviewing the team that was put in front of us, that provided recommendations on what needed to be done, the budgets that we believe are necessary to get the construction completed, and the timeframe of the design and methods for accelerating that timeframe for getting it constructed, based on previous experience. On the, on the board, on the interview board, we had a representative from Caltrans. We had a representative from the county, and each of these representatives have a lot of experience behind them, and that's how the recommendation was made.
I'll second the motion.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Absolutely, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, for bringing forth that and moving the Holland Road project forward as fast as possible. You're making good on that commitment. Next, Agenda Item 12.4. Approve the Agreement for Feasibility Study on McCall Boulevard Interchange.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jonathan Smith has the abbreviated item for you.
Again, moving forward with our CIP program, McCall Boulevard and Interstate 215 Interchange Project. Staff interviewed three firms with the same board, representatives from the county and Caltrans, and ranked RBF Consulting as the most qualified company to lead us on this important project. We have funding available to pay for this work, and staff recommends the approval of the agreement for the preliminary design feasibility study for the McCall Boulevard Interchange.
When you say the staff has funds available, you're talking about Measure A money? You're not talking about general fund money? That's a question.
Not general fund money, no.
So it's Measure A?
Part of the CIP that was approved by council this fiscal year.
So it's Measure A?
Measure A.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on this contract.
Shall we move?
Second?
Second is good.
Moved by Mr. Furman, seconded by Mr. Denver, roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilmember August. Councilmember Denver.
I really pleased this got so high on the list.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye. City Attorney reports?
We have nothing to report at this time.
City Manager report additional?
Yes, sir, thank you. I have four or five items, and we'll have an abbreviated Community Services update based on our information discussion tonight from Robert. Our new general plan that council adopted and approved won an award. The Comprehensive Planning Award from the Inland Empire Section of the American Planning Association gave the awarded, the city of Menifee, that award. Our partners at the Planning Center applied for and submitted for that award, and we won first place in the small jurisdiction category. An award ceremony will be May 8th. We'll be sending a staff person up there to receive the award, which is great. Secondarily, Menifee Matters won third place in the state of California. Through the California Association of Public Information Officers, or CAPIO, that was on April 11th, Andrea Suarez, our, our Connect Communications Partner, submitted Menifee Matters. We came in third in the entire state, and there were no divisions. In fact, Southern California was represented very well as Eastern Municipal Water District came in first, and the city of Carlsbad came in second. So we're in some very, very, very good company. And this was based on communications to the public, interacting with your residents through printed information about your city and the programs and projects that you have in there. High praise.
High praise.
So that was good.
Could you hold up that trophy again?
Yes. And then we got this piece of plastic.
Third, third, wait a minute.
Third place gets this, I wonder if first place was a little bit big.
Third place, 482 cities in the state, and that's the biggest you can get.
That's what we get, right there. Put that right there. I'd love to give you a copy of this, because you asked for it, and we did it. This is your very first copy of the Menifee Customer Satisfaction Survey. This is a "How are we doing?", "Value your feedback." It'll be available tomorrow at the front counter. We're looking at how to get it online, so there can be an online opportunity for people to do that. It's all cool and everything. You can take it home, you can mail it back in to us. We'll be collecting that data, and we'll be providing those updates to council when we get the information. We can take another one off the list.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
A concern, you're welcome, sir. A concern that we have, now that the general plan's done, we staff, community development staff, myself, Charles, Lisa, myself, we've been talking quite a bit about what the highest priority should be in the planning department, community development department, and with Planning Commission. And our concern is that now that the general plan's done, we don't have a development code. Development code adoption, we believe, should be the next thing that the Planning Commission gets done in a timely fashion. We, we're holding up and delaying a couple of projects that we know want to submit. They've contacted us, they've asked us some things. And we're talking about his medical facilities and assisted living areas within the city that, that really, and I'll have to have Charles kind of jump in with the particulars on the development code itself. And I believe it was institutional medical facilities, correct? There's about three out there that want to apply. And this is a great opportunity for us to work on our medical corridor on McCall, because they've identified some property there that they want to move in on. But with the current focus the Planning Commission has and the time it's taking on things like container ordinances and the hillside development ordinance, it's very difficult for us to focus on them working through the development code. And, you know, Charles, I think, is several chapters ahead of them, and they're continuing to review, but I'll let, I'm going to throw it to Charles for a quick minute here and he'll give you a little snapshot of what we're talking about. I guess I'm kind of asking for your help in helping us or directing me to direct Community Development and the Planning Commission to put that as our highest priority to get done. We would come back to you with a timeline about what that looks like, similar to what we did with the general plan. We can't have this laying out there for much longer. We really, really, really need to get a development code enacted. Charles, could you add a few bright words?
I can add some words, I'm not sure how bright. Yes, we are currently working on the metal shipping containers, hillside, noise, nuisance, sign code, temporary uses, and the one that Mr. Johnson was just referring to, the EDC relative to the medical corridor that we're attempting to deal with. Staff, one of my goals for this calendar year, the time I'm with you, is to get your new development code in place. That is a document that's going to be 40 or 50 chapters long. And in order for me to assist the Planning Commission in getting through that, it needs to be something that they can, can pick up and move through without being sidetracked for very long, because they'll forget where they're at, they'll forget how certain parts of the code are being dealt with in certain chapters and not in others. It will require, if we sidetrack them too much, them going back again and again. So staff is asking that the commission, the council, make it clear to, for both staff and the Planning Commission that this take at least my time as the highest priority, so that we move this thing forward. I anticipated that it would take approximately a year to get through all of that, and that's an aggressive schedule to get through an entire new development code in a year. We've got maybe 10 chapters of that 40 to 50 already in the hands of the Planning Commission, plus the ones that I just mentioned that we are working on separate from that. And so, again, staff is requesting, I am requesting that the council acknowledge and give direction that for my services and for Planning Commission activities, that the development code take number one priority.
Councilmember Denver?
For those of us that don't quite understand, development code, in summary, what is it that you're developing?
In, the general plan is the guiding philosophy of how the community will grow. The development code is the word-by-word details of exactly how that is to take place. It gives you the administrative chapters of how things are processed. It gives you the individual zones within the community, the commercial, the industrial, the mixed use, the EDC, and so forth. And within that, it specifies specifically what uses can be allowed in that zone, under what circumstances, under what review process, plot plan, conditional use permit, and so forth. And it gives you the specific development standards that say, in this zone, you're allowed a building of this height with these setbacks, with this much parking, with this much landscaping, lighting, this limitation on signs, and so forth.
How do we do that now?
You have, you're using the county code. You're using the very disjointed county code. And we have, in fact, an inconsistency between some of our newly adopted general plan land use designations and county zonings, because they weren't lined up. And that's what we're attempting to do, is line some of those things up. And it helps significantly to have one document that's internally consistent as opposed to the county, which has, over years, had a variety of amendments to it that make it, in a lot of cases, terribly inconsistent, internally inconsistent.
Deputy Mayor?
Two points, first point, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kerbit. You're talking about prioritization of a subject, not any direction to the Planning Commission as to any conclusions that they might reach.
Correct.
And that the Planning Commission should come up with their own independent decisions. Secondly, even making that decision, Ms. Biggs, is that something that should be agendized, or can we just bring it up and do it?
Well, this is a policy direction, basically, that you're giving. And I think this is something that actually you can do by consensus, just in terms of what's being asked.
Councilmember Furman?
I think just a minute ago, Mr. Johnson said there's some things that have been lingering that, that must get done. You rattled off about maybe five or six items. I wouldn't want to see them put on the back burner again. Why don't we wrap them up and, and make nothing more on your plate after you wrap up those five or six short items, and then concentrate on, on the development code.
If I could, sir, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, and I, and I know that you believe that they're very minute issues, but for some reason, the Planning Commission is at a very difficult time.
Yeah, I know, I know they are.
One, with the container issue, they want to start all over again.
Yeah.
So they don't want to take the recommendation from your ad hoc committee that you appointed as a council to come up with a solution that they could work with to move back to you. They want to start all over again. I don't know how long that's going to take. So when I hear things like that, I get a little nervous. Mr. Leclerc is here right now on an interim basis, and he's providing excellent professional expert service to the city, and I don't want to see that. I don't want to see us go too much further with our development code that will allow our, our planning staff to make sure that we have the type of quality development that you're looking for. That's really my, where I'm coming from.
Chuck, did you, did you make a reference that you're just finishing this year out there, when you said that? I, there are two answers to that. One, my comment was that, my anticipation was that in this year, that I'd be, that the code be done. And in anticipation of that being done, that was when my intention was not to be here. Unless something else is arranged.
We're not going to let him leave if you're asking that question.
And the other aspect to that is there are technical things that have to be done in order for me to continue on. But my request of you is if you put a, a consensus on the record, I am then able to talk to developers. And when they say, "I want my material now," which is not unusual for them to say, "I want my project in front of the commission now," I can say, "We have direction from the council that this is a higher priority, so instead of being in a meeting two weeks from now, it's got to be a meeting four weeks from now." It gives me ammunition that is supported by the council to tell developers that, yes, we take them seriously, and we will move them forward as quick as possible. However, my particular highest priority is that development code.
Mr. Furman, you still have the floor.
Then I would, I was suggesting there's no reason ever to cancel another Planning Commission meeting. That would help you.
Great point.
Since, I think, six or seven were canceled in 2013. There were a number of them canceled. Yes. So then we have no reason to cancel one, because we have work on their plate. As long as I have had the opportunity to provide the material to them to review and consider. Throw, throw the work on their plate, and we'll be good.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, I'll second Councilman Furman's motion. And at the same time, I'll be more than happy to make a motion as the request of the council to prioritize in the manner in which you want, again, provided that there are no implications within a motion like that that gives any kind of direction to the Planning Commission as to how they want to approach the issue.
I would believe that the city attorney's comment was that you could do by consensus that this is my highest priority to get finished.
Just in moving forward, correct. And I would so move for that consensus.
I understand all the things that you're saying, it makes sense to me. Could you have, and I'm just asking a question, could you double the meetings of the Planning Commission?
I could not keep up with that pace. I, as a staff member, provide them information.
Therefore, I think you just answered my next question. Could you set up a parallel committee, that one would do one and the Planning Commission could continue with its high priority items?
I feel it would be essential that the commission be involved in every step of the review process. Otherwise, they wouldn't feel comfortable in making their recommendation, which is their responsibility to the city council.
You can't postpone, you can't give that to another committee?
No, there's, I'm not aware of a mechanism to do that.
City Attorney?
In response to that, the Planning Commission is the Planning Commission by ordinance. So to create another group to do the same thing would take a whole process to do. You could have two Planning Commissions, but you would have to start at the council by determining that you want a new ordinance that provides for a second one. So it's not an easy thing to do.
And you might end up with five new commissioners that are inexperienced and may slow up the process.
Clarification?
Yes, sir.
I sense that the council agrees with you in asking for the direction. Want to clarify, however, when you say that we're going to prioritize the development code, we did inherit, what we inherited from the county.
Yes.
When you say we're going to delay a project because of the development code, that concerns me greatly.
Me, too.
I don't think that's the right approach. We should be able to process things on a parallel track and make it happen. Because if we, if we want to develop McCall Boulevard as a medical corridor, and we have people ready to put in applications for those things, I think it's sending the wrong message to say, "Well, sorry, guys, you got to come back in four months." I don't think we need to go there.
And staff, I have not said that to developers. What I have said to developers, when they come in and ask for advice as to what they need to do for that location, I tell them that we are working on the development code, that your particular area is this zone or is that, that zone, such as the EDC, and that we need to run on a parallel course with any application that you actually submit so that both will be taken at the same time.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Johnson? And it might have been my misunderstanding of your previous statement, so thank you.
No, we appreciate the clarification, so we're all on the same page. And I think that's really a key for us. These economic development corridor zones that we have, each have a specific development code portion to them. And when we get a couple in the same area, we're going to need to work a parallel track. We've got to move some things aside for the Planning Commission so we can, so we can work on that parallel track. It just hasn't been happening, so we want to, just wanted to share that information with you so we could get a consensus to do what we believed we should be doing and get that consensus from you.
And as we talk about economic development and commercial development, you know, we talk a good game, but the city needs to get serious about it if we really want to see the economic development on the commercial side in here. Mr. Edgerton?
Well, and at some other point, the council should really have a public conversation about our development vis-à-vis our infrastructure and our water. It appears to me at this time that if you look at all of the construction that's coming forward, particularly in residential housing, we are potentially falling behind the power curve on both infrastructure and water. But that's an opportunity, perhaps, to discuss that subject at a later date.
Mr. Furman?
Chuck, could you throw out a percentage of changes that might have to be made of the total package? Would you be altering eleven percent of it, seventeen percent, or?
I'm providing the Planning Commission with an entirely new code.
Brand new, starting from zero.
Changing a hundred percent.
One hundred percent. That does not mean, however, that a great number of the land uses, standards, language that is going to be in that new code will not be found in parts of the current county code.
That's kind of what I meant.
And I would, I would estimate that you're probably looking at one-third new language and two-thirds old.
Okay, that answers my question.
So, just to clarify, Mr. Edgerton, I don't know if we need a motion or not formally because it's not on the, because it's not on the agenda, but I just want to make sure for the purpose of us, given that consensus, you're looking for a prioritization from the council. Yes, Mr. Leclerc, process the development code, a number one priority, kind of like we did with the adoption of the general plan, and that all the other things that we're working on and have given previous direction on, hillside ordinance, container, some of the other things that you mentioned, take second position, but can still process as time goes on, and you'll be mindful of that. And we're not going to delay projects just for the sake of waiting for our code to be done. Those can also parallel track.
Correct.
Right? That's what you're looking for?
Yes.
Is there any, Mr. Edgerton, I heard from you, is there any objection that we give that direction to staff to make that the priority by completing the development code?
No, there's no objection on my part, providing that we don't get in front of ourselves if we're developing a code and some development comes up that looks like it's going to be inconsistent with any code that we would produce. I would assume that's something that would have to be discussed.
Yes.
And vetted through staff, and vetted through the Planning Commission, and presented us, to us. I think, I think we can work it both ways, and I agree with Mr. Edgerton that we have to be mindful of that. And I think that's what you've been doing anyway.
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
Previously, Chuck, you had mentioned, I think, earlier this year, that the, that list of five or six items that you would, were going to have them done by midsummer.
Mm-hmm.
Do you anticipate those will be delayed further?
Minimally, because those chapters fit into the development code that the commission will be, be moving through. So there are certain things, like the hillside, that has had a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and it will move forward. The metal shipping container is, it's scheduled for a commission meeting, and we'll see what falls out of that. But it will fit into the entire code where it fits in that particular sequence of chapters.
Yeah, you had, I think, the noise ordinance and...
We have noise, nuisance, sign, and temporary uses.
Did the agricultural, the agricultural structures get in that list yet or not?
That's a separate chapter that is on the board, but it's not in this particular list because it's been a much lower priority.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, for example, on the container ordinance, we were anticipating that decision coming before the council in the not-too-distant future, I think, from the Planning Commission, were we not?
Yes.
And still are.
That is one of the two, yes.
Except that they've gone back to complete square one, so why even revise the ordinance? Let's just execute, let's just enforce the ordinance that we have to begin with. But that's another discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we have, do you have from us what you need in terms of prioritization of work? I didn't hear any objection from the council.
I think I, we do have one.
All right. Does that conclude your management report?
I have one more.
Okay.
And then I have, then if Robert has a community services update, he's going to, he's going to go next. I received a proposal, and that was a few residents led by Mr. Jimick, Jimink, on Bell Mountain. They want to, they've asked me to ask council for a possible workshop to consider adjusting the crown of Bell Mountain. They have a proposal they would like to share with the council, and they felt it best to talk in a workshop setting. And I, after meeting with them, agreed to bring that forward and get direction from you whether to set that up or not.
I would not support that.
I would not support that.
I would adamantly oppose it.
Anybody else?
I heard you say carefully, adjust the mountain. Did I, did you mean they wish to cut it down partly and make it look like a smaller mountain or something?
They wish to adjust the lot sizes that you've approved through the general plan.
Did I hear you say that you were, that they're going to make...
They do not wish to do a general plan amendment and pay for it.
Well, then...
They do not wish to do a general plan amendment and pay for it, so they want us to do a workshop so that we...
So that you would, out of the goodness of your heart, change the entire general plan over Bell Mountain to adjust for them.
I would not do that.
What say you? That's four no's.
Hearing consensus, no.
I always like to give somebody an opportunity to speak, but could we tag it on to another workshop as a short?
It wouldn't be short.
They're asking, what they're asking for is a general plan amendment, and they need to go through the process.
Yes, they are.
That's the bottom line, so I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you.
There's four, there's four no's, so let's move on.
And Robert, you have a community services update?
Thank you, city manager. I'll make this brief in interest of the time and also in interest of what's already been discussed tonight, just some bullet points on what we'll review. Some of this is a repeat, so we won't spend much time on them, and some of it's new. Moving down the list, though, on the important dates, some things that you may want to mark your calendar with is May 24th is scheduled, the grand opening of Audie Murphy Ranch Park, essentially transitioning that from the developer over to the city. I assume, independent of what pending workshop may, outcome of pending workshop may have, this was the agreed-upon transition date. In addition, county had already approached us regarding the transition of the Case Sinoceros Center and requested a ceremony to be held on July 1. And so I can certainly follow back up with the county on that, pending, again, the outcome of a pending workshop. And then lastly, on the important dates, we were prepared, staff was prepared, to post an RFP for Park and Landscape Maintenance Services that essentially impact all of the facilities and landscaped areas on the west side of the freeway. However, this also may be delayed due to a pending discussion with Riverside County EDA.
However, if I may interject in your presentation, if we truly want to capture information in the workshop, this is a key component, because it was discussed earlier tonight in the previous agenda item, and some of the members of the public have challenged us, challenged the city, in terms of the figures that were portrayed. So this would clarify that, if you still proceeded with the RFP.
Sure.
There's no cost to do the RFP, to float the RFP, get bids, take a look at and see where the range of the prices are.
Sure, just at time.
Yeah. Mr. Denver?
On July 1, the transition of Case Sinoceros, what is, I think we had a plan on doing that regardless of any discussion, any workshop, anything, the city's going to take it over, whether we occupy one set of buildings one way or another. Aren't we taking it over regardless? I don't see what this has to do with it, except for that...
Wouldn't have an operator.
You wouldn't have an operator?
No. You wouldn't have staff to operate the center.
Exactly. That was part of this evening's staffing plan. The open parks, trails, and open space recreation master plan, this timeline you have seen before, just to update on it, today was the deadline for those proposals. So far, staff had received seven proposals from experienced firms ranging in different levels of qualification and achievement. So my recommendation is going to be to move forward with this regardless of who owns and/or operates parks citywide, because it's an important element of the city's growth. Committees and commissions, as it's been reflected upon tonight already, the three that have already been approved by this council, either through ordinance or through, I'm sorry, through ordinance or through appointment, or pending appointment, the Park Recreation and Trails Committee with the advertising and application dates that are listed here, the Senior Advisor Committee, and the Youth Advisor Committee, each of the sets of dates here.
Mr. Edgerton?
In other words, staff's recommendation, if we go ahead and support that now, an RFP, we're not out anything, we're simply getting information, we can act on it later or we cannot act on it.
That's correct.
So we're not really committing to anything other than an RFP.
If you're referring to the maintenance RFP?
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's what you're asking for now?
That is just simply an update of our timing for the RFP on the 24th, posting on the 24th. Park use ordinance, this is something that was expressed by staff at an earlier update, just updates on that. We are intending to bring, we were intending to bring that back to council for a first reading on the 7th. Again, this is another element that I think, my recommendation is that council consider, regardless of who owns or operates those parks, because currently, as Charles mentioned, relative to other codes, we, in many areas, default to the county code, which certainly has some area of opportunity for improvement. This would then put some laws on the books regarding city parks that we own.
And would this ordinance apply to the east side parks or not?
No, only city-owned facilities.
Okay, so, got it. Thank you.
On the, a future website, or a future update, there is an interest by staff to present a couple of projects in progress, although these also may be delayed until the workshop outcome occurs. One is the online registration of facility availability calendar reservation system. We intended to have a go-live of May 15th for that program, with a demonstration of the 21st for council. Depending on who is operating those facilities, we may or may not be using that system. Additionally, department website, currently there are no pages for the Community Services Department. Staff has been busy compiling information on all the city-owned facilities and programs that are currently run by EDA Community Services. While we can still do an update of this, the ownership of those, direct report of those would depend on who the operator is. And then, general policies and procedures from the department. Staff also has drafted a sports athletic field use policy, and have already scheduled a sports user group meeting on the 29th and hope to bring that back to council on the 21st. This would get delayed also, depending on who operates those facilities. Recreation fee schedule can occur regardless of who's operating it. A future or pending contract with an operator could have a requirement for that operator to follow city-approved fees. So that component, I would suggest, move forward, no matter who is operating the facilities. And then just various administrative policies that I've reported in the past. And this was the original intent of the workshop, as staff had perceived it. The discussion regarding the east side facilities and programs, a, there's a brief summary there of what we know is currently maintained on the east side. The request or the outcome of this update was to have council discuss possible date for that workshop, but that, again, that was relative to the east side sites, and then also any pending action on a LAPCO application. So that obviously has changed a bit. The workshop, as I understood from the discussion earlier, was going to be relative to not just, I'm sorry, not the east side, but primarily the west side to begin with. That concludes the update.
Thank you, Robert, no other items.
The, were we going to, were you, was staff going to mention the possibility of having a, the May 7th meeting start earlier at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00?
Yes, we were, we were anticipating a heavy May 7th agenda with many things coming forward, and if it so be the desire of the council, we could start at 6:00 instead of 7:00, thereby maybe getting out at the same time, but spending another hour.
Is there any objection from the council if the next meeting begins at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00?
I'm just, I'm curious, what do you mean by heavy? What's, what's coming down the pipe?
Well, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but there are several items, several ordinances, several items that are coming forward, and some presentations.
And an appeal hearing.
And an appeal hearing on a planning decision.
Mr. August?
I just want to say that, you know, I was thinking about making a proposal for city council meetings not to go beyond 10 o'clock. We lose a lot of concentration when the meetings go on long. I would make an effort, if I were in the city, to either spread these meetings out or make them a little shorter, because the audience loses concentration, we lose city concentration, and you know, there's an old saying, if you want to get something passed... concentration, and you know, there's an old saying, if you want to get something passed, try to pass it at 11 o'clock in the evening. Doesn't really help. I, I, I'm just getting kind of tired of this because Mr. Lennox was just talking, I'm kind of tuning him out. So, so can we work a little bit harder on maybe shortening the meetings? And if we can't get something done, then spread out, spread out the agendas.
Well, you know, as, as the meeting began tonight and this, a particular agenda was posted, we should have been out of here by 8:30, but that didn't happen. We're not. No, we're two hours beyond where we probably should have been. Mr. Johnson?
We do the best we can to get our items and agenda topics and programs and projects as soon as we can to you for a decision. And I think what you're going to be seeing from a couple meetings ago through, I don't know when, is the fact that we have a lot going on in the city, and there's a lot of things that need your approval and your policy direction on. And unfortunately, those things are not small items. You know, they're going to get bigger and bigger, especially as the projects start moving forward. So to the extent I can do that, I'd be happy to, to move those things off. We didn't put the hillside ordinance on tonight, it's coming back to you on the 21st of, of May, moved it off the 7th already. So there's some things that we've moved off the 7th and pushed back, but we really do bring you things in a timely fashion for, for, for your review, policy direction so that we can implement them. We, you know, it just so happens at times, it's very cyclical. If we have 15 people walk in the door and give us an application six months ago, all those 15 things are coming forward right now after they've been seen by the planning commission. So that's just one piece of the puzzle, though.
Mr. Flaherty, floor?
Yeah, let me, let me just say this. I think you're missing my point. If you, if you want to be effective and you want to get your point across to the council and you want to make very deliberate and good decisions, that's the problem I have. If you want to split it up, start a council meeting at 4:00 in the afternoon and then split it up, let people go out and have dinner and then come back, that's fine.
I missed your point on the timing. Thank you.
Well, and there's, you know, I appreciate the comments. I, I shared your frustration. This particular agenda, I thought, was going to be done fairly quickly. And you can't count on the 12 public commenters, you can't count on the eight for agenda items. I mean, that's, that's over an hour of public testimony, and you can't deny that. Moreover, some, some agenda items are time-sensitive, ordinance-related, performance bonds, public hearing, or an appeal hearing, things that have a, a timing, a legal timing to them have to be heard. So to the extent that we can do that, I think staff's mindful of it. I think...
Some breaks too, Mayor, a break.
Okay, we can do that. I think if the council, I mean, we had, there was a lot of healthy debate tonight.
It can be heard on a separate time.
Okay, let's get going. Mr. Edgerton?
Right. We did, I think one of the reasons we had an extensive meeting tonight is that the agenda was not written as clearly as it might have been as a reflection of the direction of council. And, Mr. Mayor, I can't put all of the emphasis on the city manager for that. You sat in the agenda meeting, and it appeared to me that there was an attempt for a rush to judgment regarding the, what we were going to do with the west side. And it, and it created a lot of controversy and that ate up a lot of time. So I think the way we present our agendas can have a lot to do with the timing of the meetings.
Well, I, I hear your subtle implication that it was my fault that this meeting went long, and I'm sorry, but you, well, with, with all...
No, just partially.
Well, with all due respect, sir, you had a great deal to do with the length of this meeting tonight because you, you sat through the entire staff presentation for the parks piece tonight, phase one. The points that you raised tonight in the public domain, you made no reference to in the finance committee. So it would have been nice for you to share some of those things with staff. Perhaps some adjustments could have been made in advance of the agenda. So with that being said, do we have consensus to start the meeting on May 7th at 6:00 PM? Okay. Do you need any, I think we should start earlier. Onto...
If it's really to 5:35, what the heck, right?
We could go 5:00, 5:30, it's determined upon council's desire to, to start earlier.
Well, and there may be a closed session, which we can put earlier then, as early as 5:00 on the close.
All right, very good. Are there future agenda requests from council members? Mr. Denver?
I'm, I don't know whether I'm doing this right or not, but I'm going to do it anyway. The, the, there's a lot was brought up today that, and one of them had to do with the transportation being a very big issue in the senior community. And then there was the issues by Louis Maisie and others having to do with the parking for commuters. Now, I hadn't really thought all that through. I would like to put on the agenda a priority having, having to do with transportation in our community and work those, that out, as well as a, involved with that, a place somehow, whether the city owns it or, or doesn't, a place for parking for commuting. And, and also, the buses don't go to Romaland, they don't go to the hospitals. They, it, there's a lot of work to be done, we need to work on that. And I know that that's in another place in our world, but I'd like to just say that I'd like to see that as a, one of the priorities we move up.
I'll second Mr. Denver, or Councilman Denver's request to agendize that subject.
Thank you very kindly. Any other agenda requests? I have a clar, I would like the, okay, on the, I have none other than to remove something off the future agenda items. Mr. Denver motioned, and Mr. August second, way back when, a consideration for a council-sponsored initiative regarding the mayoral term of office, as well as to tie future mayor compensation to that of the government code, similar to what it is for the council members. And I think that just needs to come off. That's not going, I, I don't think that's going anywhere this year, and I think if Mr. Denver is the originator of that, if you would like to pull that, I think that would help our business plan here.
I would. The only thing is, is that I think there's two parts to that. One has to do with the two-term, with the two-year term of mayor, that we should pull. In terms of the compensation, I don't know how controversial that is, and if, if the mayor still feels strongly about pulling that, then I certainly think so. But I think that's, if the two-term, two-year term is 100% controversial, I think, I think that getting pay raises for the mayor in the same percentage as we get is 25.
I would, I would agree with that. I think they're two separate issues and, and to, to hold the mayor constant while the council is getting automatic raises, I think, is inappropriate as far as structure administratively, and I would put that part on the agenda.
He's a councilman, why wouldn't he get a raise?
Because the, because the voters approved a separate compensation schedule for...
It was poorly written.
Yeah. So we have, we have a motion, a second, can, can staff split those out, bring back the, bring back a potential ballot measure for November for the compensation piece only? And we'll drop the other thing for indefinitely, for the, the second part of indefinitely.
And just so that you know, I'm not going to be in favor of, of doing that in November or whenever we bring it up unless it's tied to something else. If that's the only thing going on the agenda, I say we don't have that on the agenda, on the ballot. If it's tied with three other things happening in Menifee, I think it's a great idea, but we got to come up with something else. If that's all the vote is for the mayor to get a pay raise, that's not what I want to see on the...
You're right, that's another subject. That, that is, and, and maybe, I mean, maybe it makes more sense to do it in the general election in 2016 with the presidential election.
Maybe so, let's look at it then.
But let's look at it, let's have that discussion because it's not agendized now.
Agreed.
And I apologize, staff, for going through this, but we're trying to clean up the agenda. We, staff's asked us to prioritize some things. Mr. August has asked for quicker meetings, so this is an effort to try to get quicker future meetings by eliminating some stuff and reprioritizing, okay? Hearing no other items, this meeting's adjourned.